If you're not aware, it may not be easy for everyone who's in the room to hear. I have a microphone. Thank you. So, I'm gonna say a couple of things. The first thing is I'm calling this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the-
We can't hear it and be messing here.
This is a regular meeting of the Planning Commission of the town of Clarkdale. We're going to follow the procedure that we use for all meetings. And if you picked up a packet, you'll be able to follow along with us. So, this meeting's called to order. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Cock?
Present.
Commissioner Spence?
Present.
Commissioner Kelly?
Present.
Vice Chair Johnsons?
Present.
And Chair de blah.
Here. All right. So, public comment, I want to talk for a minute about, there's two times during this session where there will be opportunities for public comment. The first the first opportunity for public comment is for items that are not on the agenda. So, if you have a comment for something that's not on the agenda, we will take that now. Is there anyone here who desires to make comment on anything that is not agendized for this meeting? Is that Wayne? Do you?
I do.
All right. Please state your name and where you live and make your comment and see if you can make it so that you're heard way back there.
Okay, my name's Wayne DeBroski. I live at 1378 Mountain Road. And I just have a couple of questions. First of all, is a public vote required to rezonage?
That is for, is this a-
We can't take, we can't respond to questions during public comment?
Okay, well, then I'll leave you with a couple other questions which you can follow up on.
Yeah.
What is the capacity, current capacity of the wastewater treatment plant? And how much excess capacity is left? There is a requirement by the regulatory agencies that when you reach 80% capacity, you have to submit a plan to upgrade the facility. Has that been done? Are we close to that? So that's it. That's something that I would hope the board would answer at a later date.
Well, one of the things that will happen this evening, according to our agenda, is a large part of this evening is informational, providing a lot of the information that probably will be asked, questions will be asked, but-
The next thing is the impact to the current water wastewater system. The second is the- Okay, impacts to the current water wastewater system. If there's been any consideration of those impacts. And the third point I'd like to address is where the entrance and exits are to this proposed development. If they're on Cement Plant Road, as the Cement Plant Road issues that were existing five or six years ago have been corrected and would allow the town to access off of-
Right. Wayne, I actually am wondering if the questions you're asking are about this item that's on the agenda. And we have a call in that room. Ruth?
But-
Is the item in public comment on the-
We can't, I can't respond, we can't respond directly to items raised in public comment. I can tell you that the staff report will address these items.
Right, okay, good.
But I can't, I can't respond directly. I can't give you an answer right now.
Okay. Right, but we made note and the staff report is going to address much of what I think people will have questions about. And then public comment on this agenda will be later, after the report.
Yeah, and I bring those questions up because the people that currently have lived in the town and the developers have paid to upgrade those systems.
Understood.
To maintain those systems. And I would like to make sure that anybody hooking onto those systems will make a considerable contribution to those systems to offset the impacts.
Great, great comment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who has something that is not about what's on the agenda?
My name is Bessie.
Yes.
And I live at 612 Boothley Road.
Thank you, yeah.
And I have a couple of questions. Number one, and I think he's-
Yeah, what I want you to understand is, everyone to understand is if you're asking questions that are based on the matter that's on the agenda, please, we can't answer, there's an informational staff report that's preceding the public comment on this agendized item. Does that make sense?
Well, it certainly makes sense, except I don't have what you're talking about.
That the item on the agenda is this Highlands development that people are-
No, 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 I understand all that.
Okay.
My, I want to ask my questions.
All right.
Be them right or wrong, okay?
Okay.
First off, if you, if you're planning a project, if I understand it halfway correctly, you're gonna introduce another seven to eight hundred automobiles into the neighborhood. Okay, how are you gonna plan to accommodate that?
That's a question and a comment for this item that's on the agenda. That's what this time is not for. This time of public comment is for items that aren't on the agenda. What you're talking about is on our agenda.
Okay, the second item I have to talk about is, I live inside the complex of-
Mountain Gate? Yes.
Okay. How do these people traffic in and out of the complex that you want to build?
This is an item that is on, will be addressed in the staff report, followed by public comment on this matter. This is not the time for that. We want to handle public comment now because we're a town where people have an opportunity to say what they would like to say and that it's heard publicly. And it's civil.
So, so, asking about Mountain Gate, which I think is a direct reflection of what you're trying to do, is not okay for me to ask that question?
It's, we, number one, we can't respond to a question. This, we have to run this meeting, this commission meeting as prescribed probably the way public meetings-
By who? Who prescribed it?
By my, excuse me. So the state law says that if you bring up a topic in public, in public comment that we're having right now, right? Steph can't respond. I can't tell you what the answer is. I can't respond.
So when do we find out this stuff?
After, I'm going to give up, get up and give a presentation. I'm gonna answer a lot of the questions that people have brought up. And then after that, everybody has a chance to talk.
What are tax implications of this?
I can't answer that.
Listen, I advise everyone, if you can be patient, listen to the staff report. So much of what you have questions about and what you want to know is in the presentation that we're gonna do as soon as we've done this required by law opportunity for people to make a comment about anything that's not on the agenda. So if there's nothing further, I think we're all right, come on up. Did you fill out a public comment form? We really do want to hear from everyone.
But I would like to see, my name is Mark Pepper, 1609 Versus South Street.
Okay.
Could you guys address the sound system? And get something further back there? I have a hard time, even with my ears cut, to hear the conversation going on. If you want public participation, please provide that for these people back here, and for myself.
Do we have a microphone? Yeah, if you would.
All right, so it's possible we're going to be able to add a microphone. Do you all want to wait while that happens? All right, party on.
Trouble here. Feel free to move into that room so that you can hear and see. Um, I really want to apologize. We did not know about the freight ports. We found out at the same time you did and we really apologize for you having to wait. So, at this point, I think we can move forward.
Thank you all for your patience. I don't need to yell, right? Okay, good. So, in order to keep on with this meeting, we just want to do approval of the minutes from last time. Do I have do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the January 17 Planning Commission meeting.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, though, those all, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, so it passes. New business. Public hearing, rezoning of approximately 18.56 acres for the proposed Highlands at Clarkdale. So, the Planning Commission will hold a public hearing to take public comment on application 230147, the Highlands at Clarkdale, for the proposed rezoning of approximately 18.56 acres of a 23.84 acre parcel from R1, that's single-family residential, to a planned area development, 10 planned area development, eight dwelling units per acre. For a vacant parcel of land generally located at the northwest corner of State Route 89A, Cement Plant Road and Clarkdale Parkway, APN 400-05-010G, submitted by John Lash Plateau Partners Two LLC. So, and also, B, public hearing, preliminary development plan. That's the preliminary plat for the Highlands at Clarkdale. The Planning Commission will hold a public hearing to take public comment on application number 230147, the Highlands at Clarkdale, for consideration of the preliminary development plan. That's the preliminary plat consisting of 139 single-family residential lots on approximately 18.56 acres on a vacant parcel of land generally located at the northwest corner of State Route 89A, Cement Plant Road and Clarkdale Parkway, APN 400-05-010G, submitted by John Lash Plateau Partners Two LLC. Uh, I need to go through these, right? All these, yep. C, rezoning of approximately, I thank you for your patience, rezoning of approximately 18.56 acres of a 23.84 acre parcel for the proposed Highlands at Clarkdale. Discuss, consider, and act upon application number 230147, the Highlands at Clarkdale, for the proposed rezoning of approximately 18.56 acres of a 23.84 acre parcel from R1, single-family residential, to PAD 10, Planned Area Development, eight dwelling units per acre for a vacant parcel of land generally located at the northwest corner of State Route 89A, Cement Plant Road and Clarkdale Parkway, APN 400-05-010G, submitted by John Lash Plateau Partners Two LLC. D, preliminary development plan, preliminary plat for the Highlands at Clarkdale. Discuss, consider, and act upon application number 230147, the Highlands at Clarkdale, for consideration of the preliminary development plan, preliminary plat consisting of 139 family residential lots on approximately 18.56 acres on a vacant parcel of land generally located at the northwest corner of State Route 89A, Cement Plant Road and Clarkdale Parkway, APN 400-05-010G, submitted by John Lash Plateau Partners Two LLC. So, I, we're ready for a staff report?
Yep.
Okay, so this is the part of the meeting where we're going to have a staff report. And you can look at the displays.
Good evening, commissioners and public, before we get started on the staff report and the presentation, Gus-
Okay.
Okay, so before we get started with the presentation, I just wanted to touch on a couple of things real quickly. Typically, we'll have a public hearing and then an action item, and then a public hearing and then an action item. Today, we're going to do, take both public hearings at the same times to comment on both the plant, the rezoning, and the preliminary plat at the same time. For the re, in order to take action on the preliminary plat, the question of rezoning has to be answered first. Have to go through that first. Rather than come before the public and have to stand up here and say, I'm sorry, we can't talk about that yet. Steph felt it was important to go ahead and have the public hearing on the preliminary plat so we can take those comments at the same time and give the public an opportunity to provide the comments that they have on both the rezoning and the proposed plat at the same time. So, the act, the staff's recommendation for action tonight on the preliminary plat, preliminary development plan is to send the item back to staff for more work until such time as the question about rezoning has been answered.
Thanks. All right, thanks for your patience. Here we go.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Perfect. All right, at long last, we're here this evening to talk about the Highlands. Like I said before, we're going to do the, we will take public comment on both the plat and the rezoning this evening. And the action tonight for the plat will be to send the application back to staff for additional work so that we can continue to work on that while the rezoning is running its course. Okay, so, next slide, please. So this is a subject property. It is located at the intersection of Cement Plant Road, Clarkdale Parkway, State Route 89A. It is currently zoned, single-family residential, which is a 10,000 square foot minimum lot size. The proposed zoning is a planned area development 10, which allows for eight dwelling units per acre. This request is for the R1 zone portion of the parcel only. The commercial zone portion, which is the front 300 feet, is not a part of the rezoning. There's two reasons for that. Number one, this kind, this, the commercial zoning district allows for all residential uses in that zoning district. And secondly, the properties that are being platted means that there's a subdivision of land. The multifamily unit that is proposed for that in the future is not, is not, uh, will not be subdivided. They will be under unified ownership. So, I want to talk, just one second, about the difference between zoning and land use designation because it's important as we go along this evening. So zoning sets forth very detailed development standards, lot coverage, setbacks, and so forth. So you can see we have differences in R1, R2, um, R3, commercial. Those districts all mean different things. They're all different types of residential zoning or commercial zoning. They all have their own separate standards. General plan designations are broad land use. So they are not nearly as specific as the zoning regulation, or the zoning districts that underlie. Next slide, please. Next slide, Charity. So this is the general plan designation. The designation for this area is mixed-use planned area development. And the purpose of this district is, or this designation is to provide areas specifically intended to support mixed-use developments, which include any combination of residential, commercial, or industrial zoning districts. Next slide. So this is the preliminary plat. It shows you the configuration of lots. The purpose of a plat is to lay out the configuration of the lots, the dimensions of the lots, the location of the lots, streets, open spaces, and other amenities that are fixed to a map. So when the plat, if the plat is approved, this document is recorded with the county as to, so is illegal approved plat. Next slide, please. So considerations for approval. The zoning code sets forth a number of considerations for approval of a zone change. Uh, first of all, is that the amendment is a zoning map change or a zoning amendment conforms to Clarkdale general plan, specifically the land use element. That the amendment conforms to a focus area plan if applicable. Development provides buffering to adjacent land uses. Proposed development mitigates traffic impact. The proposed development mitigates noise impact to surrounding properties. The proposed development will conform to all existing zoning regulations, including the outdoor lighting code and landscape design standards. So we're gonna walk through these considerations one at a time, so, and, and talk about how this zoning request either does or does not comply with these, these considerations. All right, Charity, next, please. Oh, I'm sorry, there's number seven. The proposal provides community benefits such as pedestrian connections, vehicular connections, improvements to the public right-of-way, installation of utility infrastructure, improvement of public space, protection of open spaces, and that the funding and installation of all required improvements is specified by the town shall be responsibility of the applicant. And next, Charity. General, so the first consideration is general plan conformance. Uh, this is not just the first consideration in, in town code, but statutorily, any zone change that happens in the town has to comply with the general plan. So chapter two of the general plan is the land use element. This chapter, or this element classifies land by use for all lands within Clarkdale, and it provides broad guidance relative to the development potential of a given piece of land. The purpose again of the mixed use or planned area development is to provide areas specifically intended to support mixed-use developments. Mixed-use districts can include any combination of residential, commercial, or industrial zoning districts. The planned area development requires the creation and approval of a final development plan as part of the process. Where a mixed-use development can be held to the strict interpretation of the underlying zoning districts, planned area developments can provide flexibility in design and configuration of uses. Next slide, please. Land use principle two is to ensure new development is consistent with proximal existing neighborhoods and development, established circulation corridors, open spaces, and the town sustainability plan. Goal number one is to protect residential neighbors from incompatible uses by implementing buffering measures that mitigate detrimental impacts. And goal number three is prioritize the use of draws, washes, and other natural features to buffer developments from each other. Incentivize development of challenged, challenging terrain by providing density bonuses for undevelopable, undevelopable areas that are dedicated to preservation of their natural state. Next, next slide, please. So, this is, so, this is the line graph for the proposed landscaping at the end of the project showing the trees that are proposed and some of the other landscaping. There's some shrubs and other plantings that are proposed to buffer the impact along Clarkdale Parkway. There's also a sizable separation between the existing neighborhood, the Upper Clarkdale, and this project boundary of about 60 feet that swale or wash area is heavily vegetated as well. That also provides additional buffering. Next slide, please. This is the fencing plan. There are there are lots that will have block fence. There are lots that- So along the little wash area, there is a two-foot split face block with a four-foot ornamental fence. There's also ornamental fencing at the cul-de-sac, split face block with cap along Clarkdale Parkway, and then also block with ornament and fence, and some of the cluster home product. Next slide, please. So general plan conformance, land use. Land use principle two, goal four, is to ensure that the proposed development is compatible with existing development, both in terms of density and intensity. So what we did was take a look at the average dwelling units per acre for Highlands, which is seven and a half dwelling units per acre, compared it to that in Mountain Gate, and compared it to that in Upper Clarkdale. So for Mountain Gate, the average lot size is 4,035 square feet, which has some very high-density townhomes and about 3,000 square foot lots. So the, for those 341 acres, or 341 units on 39 acres, the density is 8.6 dwelling units per acre. For Upper Clarkdale, we looked at the blocks close to the project, but for the rest of the Upper Clarkdale, the lots are not a lot, are not too much bigger. Uh, so we're looking at the average, average. In Upper Clarkdale, at 8.37 dwelling units per acre. Next slide, please. So this shows you the lots, so all, all plats like Upper Clarkdale are typically divided up into blocks and lots rather than units like you would see in, in Mountain Gate. So these are the blocks, and these are the average lot sizes in those blocks. You can see they vary anywhere from 8.06 to 8.7 dwelling units per acre. Next. Next part, there we go, Mountain Gate. So this is the final development plan for Mountain Gate. The cottage homes are at 7.16 dwelling units per acre. The standard lots are 5.45. The townhomes are at 14.36. And the estate lots are about three and a quarter, so that gives you an overall average density for Mountain Gate at 7.65. Next slide, please. Uh, general plan conformance. Uh, so we're still, still talking about the general plan conformance. It's not just the configuration of the lots, but the chapter two also talks about providing for a variety of housing options across economic and configurational strategy. It's a balanced residential units that will accommodate the changing needs of Clarkdale residents. Next. Um, so we also, we're talking about housing and general plan compliance. Uh, the housing element talks specifically to the forms of housing that are available in Clarkdale. When William Clark designed Clarkdale, he knew that providing safe, attractive, and affordable housing for his employees would be critical to the success of the United Verde Copper Company. Now, more than 100 years later, that same ethos prevails in the town that bears his name. Safe, adequate, and affordable housing is a cornerstone cornerstone for every successful community. Without it, the local and regional economy fails. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, as we continue to talk about the general plan and the condition number one, we, it's important- condition number one, we, it's important to also talk about the guiding principles in, in the housing elements. So the guiding principle H1 again is ensure that equal housing opportunities are provided for all sectors of the community without regard to race, color, creed, or income. Goal H1 is to expand the availability of a variety of types of water park. Policy H1A is to encourage development of affordable workforce housing in Clarkdale. And action one is to provide density bonuses for projects that dedicate dwelling units to workforce housing. Right now, but hang on Charity, just right there. Just stop there for a second. So right now in Clarkdale, we have about seventy percent of the housing stock that is single family residential detached housing. Less than ten percent is single family attached. Less than ten percent are two or more units and less than ten percent are mobile halls. Okay, go ahead. Next slide, please. So I wanted to talk a second here about tenure and occupancy of the existing dwelling units. Right now, we have about seventy-two percent owner occupied, which is typically the single family residential home, and then twenty-eight percent that are occupied by renters. Right now, the actual occupancy rate is ninety-six percent with about, it's rounded up to five. It's about a four and a half percent occupancy or vacancy rate, excuse me. So why are we talking about this in, in the context of this, of this rezoning action? Well, because it's important to consider, is, is part of this project, what the, what the existing condition of the housing market is. If we can go to the next slide, please. So in two thousand and nineteen, the Verde Valley Regional Economic Organization did a valley wide, Verde Valley wide study of homeownership costs in, in the homeownership market in, in the Verde Valley, across the valley, Sedona, Cotton, Camp Verde, Clarkdale, and some of the outlying unincorporated portions of the county. So this is a very telling slide. In Clarkdale, fifty percent of the residents with a mortgage pay thirty-five percent or more of their monthly income and housing costs. I'm gonna say that again. Fifty percent of the residents of Clarkdale thirty-five percent or more of their monthly income and housing costs. The standard is twenty-eight percent. Next slide, please. So how does Clarkdale compare to the Apple Pike County and the rest of Arizona? For those paying thirty, for those paying more than twenty-eight percent of their income in housing in Clarkdale, that portion of the population is sixteen, sixty-two percent. And only thirty-eight percent are paying twenty-eight percent or less. So you can see how we stack up with the county and statewide. We're significantly higher than both. Next slide, please. Lastly, for consideration number one is housing. Again, is to provide development opportunities for cost efficient forms of housing such as tiny homes, modular construction, manufactured housing, condominiums, multi-generational housing, and single family attached dwelling units. Action one under this general plan policy is to support the use of planned area developments to encourage innovative design and development of affordable housing. So with respect to the first consideration of general plan compliance, staff finds that the proposed rezoning supports the goals, policies, and actions set forth in the housing element and in the land use element of the general plan. Next slide, please. Second on the list was the focus and focus area plan conformance. Over the past ten years, town staff and the planning commission have worked on a number of focus area plans that provide more specific guidance for distinct areas of Clarkdale. This project is not within any of those plans, therefore it's not applicable. Next slide, please. Buffering of adjacent uses. Oh, we talked about this already. This is consideration number three. You can see again the line drawing with the, the landscaping, the line drawing with the fencing schedule, and then the sixty feet of separation between the edge of the public right of way and the edge of the, of the boundary for the subject parcel in Upper Clarkdale. Next slide, please. Traffic. So condition number four is mitigation of traffic impact. As a requirement of this application, the applicant had to submit a traffic impact analysis. These are the current conditions in Clarkdale at this intersection, eighty-nine A in Jerome sees three thousand six hundred ninety trips per day. Cement Plant Road, three thousand two hundred eighty-nine A to Cattoloid, seven thousand one hundred and fifty. Number One Foods, this section between Number One Foods and Mountain Gate Drive sees three thousand and forty. And Mountain Gate Drive to downtown, one thousand nine. Next slide, please. So traffic distribution, where do people go? Ten percent of them go to Jerome, ten percent go to the cement plant, ten percent are going to downtown Clarkdale, and seventy percent are going to Jerome.
Cotton.
I'm sorry, Jerome, Cottonwood. So this, the counts for this traffic impact analysis were done on May ninth of two thousand and twenty-three. So school was in session and it's a fairly recent study that's been done. Next slide, please. So a complete buildup, which there's the twenty years, you would see an additional twenty-five trips going up to Jerome. And, and additional nine hundred and eighty trips on Cement Plant Road. An additional one thousand seven hundred trips down eighty-nine A to Cottonwood. Another nine hundred and eighty trips between Number One to Mountain Gate Drive and then to Mountain Gate Drive to downtown, another two hundred and fifty trips. So this this is typical traffic counts and the this project is mitigates the traffic impact by directly major collectors rather than local streets. Next slide, please. And then this again, next slide. There we go. Noise conformance. So consideration for number five is that the proposed project mitigates noise impact to surrounding properties. This property is currently currently surrounded by vacant land. There's, again, there's a six feet foot minimum width swale between the project and the third South Street area. There's also a twenty-five foot setback from the property boundary to the construction envelope where the homes would actually be built. So we're at eighty-five feet separation. The residential use will have minimal impact on the surrounding properties. With respect to noise, the site, the site proposes extensive landscaping that will help buffer this site from adjoining residential uses and the noise that would be created. The noise created by this subdivision would be any different than any other subdivision. So staff finds that this, that the proposed application conforms to this this consideration. Next slide, please. Zoning code conformance. The proposed development, this is consideration number six. The proposed development will conform to all existing zoning regulations. These are all of the zoning regulations that the town staff looks at when we review these applications when they first come in. We also look at them when they go through technical review, which is an additional review that all projects undergo when, after the preliminary, if the preliminary is planned, is approved, the next step would be for a technical review by staff and outside agencies like ADA and so forth to ensure that they're in compliance with those codes as well. So we look at outdoor lighting signs, corner lots, miscellaneous projections of an architectural member, and best height noise and subdivision. Next slide, please. So the next slide, the next section is about the consideration number seven, and that had quite the little list of public benefit or community benefit items to be considered. So the first, I think the fourth one are pedestrian connections and improvements to the right of way. So as part of this project, this, this is the half section from, so it would be the center line over to the shoulder for the improvements on Cement Plant Road that would include a five foot bike lane and then a five foot sidewalk in the back of curb and then a level foot travel. So would add a bike lane and add a sidewalk that's not currently there. Next slide, please. This is the Clarkdale Parkway frontage half section. So again, we're looking at a level foot travel lane, a five foot bike lane, a four foot buffer, and then a five foot sidewalk. So the sidewalk will be set back four feet toward Clarkdale Parkway, giving you some relief from, giving pedestrians and bicyclists some relief from traffic. And this would be along the entire frontage of the property. Next slide, please. Also, for the community benefit for connections, for pedestrian connections, is a social trail. There is right now a social trail, and that's a term we use for an unrecognized trail that just kind of people use and use, and it becomes a trail. This trail connects Mountain Gate to the Clarkdale Jerome School. This is widely used by a lot of the kids, it's my understanding, to get back and work at the school. So the developers incorporated this, this social trail into the design of the subdivision. The green line, I'm not very good with drawing on the computer. So I used a white highlighter that green line basically shows you the path for a decomposed granite trail that would wind through the the neighborhood and then there are also, there's also landscaping to provide additional shade to those people who use that trail. And it does connect up at the edge to the existing trail on the Clarkdale to Jerome School property. Next. So vehicular connections, this is the benefit B is how does this, how do the streets and roads connect to what's already in place? So on the left-hand side is the, the the landscaping improvements to the Cement Plant Road connection. You can see on the right-hand side, the Cement Plant Road access point, and then the seventy-five foot deceleration lane that's been included in this plan. I want to talk about that for just a second. Deceleration lane, so in the traffic impact analysis, the TIA as we call it for short, there was not, the vehicle trips per day did not warrant a deceleration lane. However, given the kind of traffic we have with the semi trucks and the cement trucks going back and forth from Cement Plant Road or Cement Plant every day, we asked the developer to include a deceleration lane, and he's agreed to do that. If it's not required in the develop or the traffic impact analysis, we really can't require them to do that. So this is something that they have done outside of what's normally required. This is the, next one, Charity, please. Vehicular connections, these are the connections for the roundabout at Mountain Gate. You can see the landscaping and there's some signage also included on the left-hand side. The right-hand side just shows you the dimensions of the street and the configuration and how it would intersect with the existing street. We've got a forty-foot right of way and some bike lanes along the side of that as well. One of the meetings I had with members of the public had asked about striping, and that is something that we will be asking the developer to do as part of the final improvement plans, is to add striping to that roundabout. So we have clearly defined pedestrian crosswalks. Next slide, please. This one's really hard to see. I apologize, but it is what it is. This is the utility plan, the preliminary utility plan for the subdivision. This shows you the location of water and sewer lines, both the mains and the streets, and then the yard lines or the lamps that connect the houses to the infrastructure throughout the subdivision. The, this the benefit to the community for this is that it's an extension of this infrastructure from Mountain Gate up to Cement Plant Road. So that any future development the opposite side of Cement Plant Road from this site could, can then connect to this infrastructure. There's capacity in the pipes to carry that future development. Next slide, please. The consideration of number seven, benefit E is improvement of public space. So in Town Park, the developers agreed to a hundred and fifty thousand dollar contribution to the town for new bathrooms at Town Park. More people will likely be using the park and adding these additional facilities will decrease the need for as many portals as we end up using for a lot of the public events. Next slide, please. So the last of the benefits is the community benefit of protecting open space. There is a large swale or drainage wash area that goes, runs along the boundary of this property. You can see the heavier line is the property boundary and then the back of the lots that would be created are set back from that at least twenty-five feet. In most places, it's probably another thirty to sixty feet, that big dip that you see towards up towards Cement Plant Road is about a hundred feet back. So this project not just proposes, but actually does preserve the existing swale on the north and northwest boundary of the subject property. A minimum twenty-five foot setback is also planned for the entirety of the boundary, and the additional open space follows the existing contours of the wash. So the, in, in all that's about, it's a little over five acres. I think it's five point one two acres of additional open space. Okay, next slide. So let's talk about, a minute about the R1, something that currently applies to this, this parcel. So what is allowed in R1 zoning? And when we say allowed, we mean these are uses by right. People have the right to use the, to develop these uses on that, on their R1 zone property. Single family residential homes are allowed at least ten thousand square feet. This would also include tiny homes. We allow tiny homes as a single family residential home. Publicly owned or operated park, playground, or community building, installations for sewer, water, gas, electric, and telephone main lines, and incidental appurtenances, family daycare homes located on a public street. Next, please. Bed and breakfast establishments, cultivation, possession, consumption, processing, manufacturing, and transportation of recreational marijuana at an individual's primary residence for personal use. Accessory uses, buildings or structures customarily incident to any use permitted in this section such as servant or guest quarters, private garages, private workshops, and home occupations. Next slide, please. So what are the development standards for the R1 zoning district? So this is, this dictates the lot coverage, the size of the structure you can build, all of those details that are included in the zoning district. Again, the minimum lot size is ten thousand square feet. The maximum building height is two and a half stories, not thirty-five feet. Maximum lot coverage is thirty percent. Minimum lot frontage is sixty feet. And the average lot width has to be eighty feet. And the minimum setbacks from property line are twenty feet front and rear and ten feet on the sides. So when we say by right, we mean no further, no further action is needed. If somebody wants to build a garage or something like that, all they need is a building permit. There's no zoning clearance required other than ensuring they need the minimum setbacks. So I want to talk a minute about a holding zoning district. So a holding district is a, one that's So a holding district is a one that's used to provide baseline district, knowing that the ultimate use of the property will likely require a zone change. And Yavapai Colony, they use RCU two A, which is residential conditional use, two acre minimum is a holding classification for most of the undeveloped land in the county. So if you look at a map of the county, you'll see wide swaths of property zone RCU two A, and that's the holding designation. So Clarkdillers won't use R one as a holding district since the nineteen seventies, when ordinance forty-three years approved. That's the first time that uh somebody changed zoning from R one to a commercial land residential use. The land where Mountain Gate and Crossroads and Mingus are located were also zoned R one prior to, prior to being rezoned to accommodate higher density of residential development. Uh let's go to that. So these are the old, the, on the left is the oldest zoning map I could possibly find for Clarkdale. Uh and you'll see in yellow that's all of the R one zoned uh uh land. I think this is probably from the nineties. On the right hand side, you'll see a zoning map for from November eighth, two thousand and five specifically, and you can see the changes. Uh they're highlighted in pink. So you've got the PAD for mountain, for um Crossroads at Mingus. You've got the PAD for uh the um Mountain Gate and then the, you'll see a little pink over on the other side. That was rezoned from R one to R one A at some point uh in history. So um you can see that the the, that this zoning district has been used to rezone from a lower density to a higher density in the past. Next please. So what if we stick to uh R one zoning? What do we get? Eighty single family homes could be constructed on lots built less than ten thousand square feet, maximum height of thirty-five feet or two and a half stories for homes and accessory uses. Streets would be built, built to MAG standards and dedicated to the town for perpetual maintenance. So when, when I say MAG standard, I'm talking about the Maricopa Association of Government Standards or yes, Maricopa Association of Governments. Uh standards that is, that requires it for uh the streets in the subdivision and the improvements to Clarkdale Parkway and Cement Plant Road would be a vertical, vertical curve, two foot gutter and a four foot sidewalk directly behind the curb like we currently have on eighty-nine A. Developer would still be responsible for construction of utility infrastructure. Residents would pay connection fees, but no additional contributions to water storage would be required. If a developer chooses not to limit homes uh to, not to limit homes constructed, constructed specific models, no design review would be required. No improvements to the Town Park would be required and no contributions to the Parkway Parkway improvements grant application would be required. Next. So I want to talk a bit about the municipal subdivision regulations in Arizona's uh revised statutes. So Title Nine governs cities and towns and Article six point two sets forth the requirements for municipal subdivisions in the state of Arizona. Uh Section nine dash four sixty-three oh five sets forth the state statutes with respect to the imposition of development fees by municipality that are intended to offset the costs associated with providing necessary public services. Development fees assessed by municipality under Section or Subject, following requirements. They happen to result in uh in a beneficial use to the development. Next slide please. The municipality should calculate the development fee based on the infrastructure improvement plan adopted pursuant to this section. The development fee shall not exceed proportionate share of the cost of the necessary public services based on service units needed to provide necessary public service and cost for the necessary public service made necessary. A new development should be based on the same level of service provided to the existing development. So we are limited beyond this in what we can charge. Next slide, please. Because in in Section two and three, the uh the statute review refers to calculation of development fees on an infrastructure improvement plan. The town doesn't have an adopted infrastructure improvement plan. We're working with consultants to de- develop an infrastructure master, master plan. Could base an IIP on, but we don't have one right now. So all we can charge the developer fees for are things. It has to be proportional. It has to be based on the impact that his project has on existing infrastructure. So we can't ask for anything outside of the capacity that he's using in existing infrastructure. That's things like streets, water, sewer, water storage, we are uh street improvements. We are limited to what the actual impact is. Next please. So again, with, without the zone change, what can the town charge the developer? The only fees we can justify with any sort of plan would be certain part based on the existing water wastewater master plan and recently adopted fee schedule. We can't require any improvements beyond the minimum set forth in code without an I M E to justify the costs. Okay, next slide please. I'm behind on my pages, excuse me. So I want to turn here for a minute and talk about the planned area development standards because this is the, the zoning district that we're talking about rezoning this property to. So we talked about this a bit in the general plan portion of of, of the presentation where we talked about um how the general plan supports the rezoning of properties in the mixed use and PAD districts, districts your uh land use designation to a planned area development. So the standards for planned area development are as follows. Purpose of a planned area development is to provide various types and combinations of land uses such as commercial centers, single and multifamily housing, industrial complexes, public spaces through the adoption of preliminary and final development. Again, this is an example of the final development plan from Mountain Gate. Next slide please. To establish planning and development control parameters while allowing sufficient flexibility to prevent, permit final, final detailed planning at the time of actual development, permit flexibility in land use, site design, placement of buildings, use of open spaces, and other development features. So without a planned area development, the applicant is entitled to develop this property or this property in conformance with the existing design standards and development standards for the R one A or for, excuse me, for the R one zoning district. No other regulations or requirements beyond the minimum requirements that of the R one code can be imposed. Next. Uh to, number three, to encourage and permit unified planning to achieve a compatible mixture and variety of land uses within the PAD and with the existing and anticipated development in the surrounding area. So without a PAD, the applicant is entitled to develop the property, again, in conformance with existing development standards under the R one zoning district. We cannot require any sort of conformance with the existing built environments uh beyond the minimum requirements of code. So in, in essence, what you would have is individual lot development. People would buy a lot. They could, if, if the developer decides he's not going to provide design guidelines or uh specify, specific uh types of houses that can be built. They can build whatever kind of house they want on there. There's no divide, design standards. There's no controls over what the house looks like. It's just whatever somebody wants to build. Next slide please. Planned area development standard number four, to accomplish the purpose of zoning and other regulations to an equivalent or higher degree than when such regulations are designed, controlled, developed on individual lots. Again, by right, the applicant is entitled to develop the subject property into eighty single family residential lots and sell them as individual lots with no uniform development requirements. Conformance to the development standards for the R one district would prevail. So this means that somebody can build a two and a half story home, they can build a thirty-five foot high workshop and they can do that by right. The, the town, there is nothing that the town can do. That's, that's their right under the R one zoning district to do. Next slide please. Uh planned area development standard number five, the purpose is also to promote economic and efficient land use and improved level of amenities, appropriate harmonious variety, creative design, and a better environment. Economical and efficient land use for higher densities requires less infrastructure to serve new development and less infrastructure for perpetual maintenance by the town. The in, in a PAD, if there is an HOA, the HOA can keep, maintain the streets privately. The utilities all get turned over to the town for perpetual maintenance. So the more infrastructure there is, the more there is for us to maintain. Existing amenities such as parks can be enhanced where they're constructing new facilities that increase maintenance demands. And the compact design that can be achieved through a PAD increases walkability and bikeability and reduces reliance on automobiles. Next slide please. So um I just wanted to click through a few of the, the architectural renderings of what these homes might look like. Uh there's been questions about um sizes. So these are the cluster homes. These are the single family detached homes located in the middle of the project. These range from one thousand one hundred and twenty-one square feet to one thousand eight hundred and forty-eight square feet, and that's the two story, which will show you the two story elevation on the next slide. This is the two story elevation. And then next slide. These would be the small lot. They're basically a detached townhome style, one thousand six hundred and thirty square feet, seven, one thousand seven hundred and eighty-nine square feet. Next slide. So I wanted, yeah, we've heard several objections. Some council meetings about this project and I wanted to respond to a couple of those uh before we get into public comment. So hopefully we can answer some of the questions and the objections that the public has. So again, going back to density and intensity, we've heard a lot of complaints about the density and the intensity of this project. So when we rezone property, one of the things we look at is the surrounding built environment to see what is there and it does the proposed project or the proposed rezoning in this case, is it supported by what's already there? Or are we proposing something that is not at all compatible to what's already been built? So the, the density, you can see the densities, again, at, at Highlands are less than the, the density uh at Mountain Gate. When you look at the smaller lot project, it are about the same size. It might be slightly bigger when you include the standard sized lots and when you include the estate sized lots. The um Upper Clarkdale, the density up there is, is more dense than the Highlands PAD. When that neighborhood, when those neighborhoods were designed, they were designed with that density because they understood that having that compact design provides walkability and provides economic use of, economical use of infrastructure. The intensity of this project is no different than the surrounding uh existing residential neighborhood. So when we talk about intensity, we're talking about things like the intensity of use of a residential neighborhood versus the intensity of use of a gas station or the intensity of use of a shopping center or the intensity of use of an industrial application. Those would be considered incompatible uses and incompatible intensities. Next slide please. Next slide. We don't have the water. So water is a big um big concern in Arizona. When I moved here from Michigan, I couldn't believe how obsessed people were with water and now I understand why. So in two thousand and ten, the town of, uh, town of Clarkdale applied to, applied to the Arizona Department of Water Resources to become a designated water provider. It's unusual for a town the size of Clarkdale to have that status. But they went through uh rigorous hydrolog- hydrological studies, water depth studies and, and other assessments to figure out what the water supply is and what uh the uh use would be into the future. We uh at that time, staff projected future use based on zoning and also based on what was in the aquifer. It doesn't matter what we zone property. If there's no water down there, it doesn't do us any good. So as a result of that designation, the town is entitled to use one thousand six hundred and sixty-six acre feet of water per year. Our current consumption is about around four hundred wa- uh acre feet of water per year. It's been pretty consistent. It has not changed much. The town's done extensive work to repair leaks in the existing water system so that we're not having the water losses that we used to have. Um our, the designation of an adequate water supply is an adequate one hundred year water supply. So we supply the developer with an, or the applicant with a letter of serviceability based on project demand. So we do rigorous reviews of what is, uh, what our water demand is. Next slide please. So this is a slide many of you who've attended any of the water meetings have probably seen this before. Uh so again, with the allocation of one thousand six hundred and sixty-six acre feet per year at the top, you'll see what the uh, the existing wells can pump and treat uh for the arsenic treatment plant on a daily basis. Um the pump rating, uh if we pumped everything wide open, we could pump one million three hundred and thirty-two gallons per day. So the next section of the slide shows you the current number of connections, water connection. We have two thousand two hundred and eighty. Uh the remaining lots in Centerville that are not built, we still track those. The remaining uh Mountain Gate lots, still track those. The remaining Clark, uh crossroads at Mingus lots. Any vacant lots that are still left in Black Hills West, the Plateau subdivision and the Tewaqui Inn. That daily consumption is five hundred and forty-two, seven, five hundred and forty-two thousand seven hundred and eighty-two gallons. With the proposed um uh two hundred and eighty-three dwelling units for the subject parcel uh and the additional uh walk backwash at the arsenic treatment plant, it would be up to six hundred and six, eight hundred and sixty-five gallons of water per day. Next slide please. So here is how much water is that. So there are about three hundred and twenty-six gallons of water in it based on the projects currently in the pipeline, which would be the available units in uh Crossroads at Mingus, the available units at Mountain Gate, the available uh units in Centerville, what is uh the Tewaqui Inn, this project. The build out will consume six hundred and six uh thousand eight hundred and fifty-six gallons of water a day or six hundred and seventy-nine acre feet a year. Again, that's less than half of the town's thousand six hundred and sixty-six gallon or acre feet per year we can use. Right. Acre feet, not gallons, I'm sorry. Next slide please. So what about storage? Uh at the top, you can see what our current storage cap capacity is, two million three hundred and eighty-eight thousand five hundred and two gallons. Uh the minimum storage that we have to maintain for current connections is one million four hundred and eleven, one hundred and nine gallons of fifty-nine percent of that capacity. Three day storage for current and expected is one million six hundred and twenty-eight, three hundred and forty-five gallons, sixty-eight percent of our storage capacity. And um minimum storage for the current plus the expected would be one million eight hundred and tw- uh twenty-five hundred and ninety-six or uh seventy-six percent of the current capacity. So we have ample capacity left in our store, our water storage system as well. Sewer, everybody also is concerned about the capacity of the sewer plant. Next please. Uh again, committed wastewater tw- uh connections. We have one thousand one hundred and eighty-four current connections. Again, remaining lots in Centerville, remaining Mountain Gate, remaining crossroads, Plateau, Tewaqui. Uh that brings the total to uh four gallons per day um on That brings the total to four gallons per day on average. The average household in Clarkdale uses two hundred, or flushes two hundred and six gallons of water per day. That's a hundred and ninety-four thousand one hundred and sixty-six gallons per day, or fifty-five percent of our capacity. At eighty percent capacity, we have to start design on a new system and submit it to A D E Q for approval. So that's an eighty-five gallon, eighty-five thousand, yes, eighty-five thousand eight hundred and thirty-four gallons. Of the remaining residential connections that we can support at the wastewater treatment plant would be six hundred and seventy-seven. So really, we're at about seventy percent of our capacity at the wastewater treatment plant, so we still have ten percent to go. Or probably another three hundred and some odd units before we have to design and build a new one. Uh, next slide. Uh, this is one of the complaints we hear that we're just giving it away, that this is a for-profit land grab and the town is getting nothing. Development is a for-profit activity, I rely if I told you otherwise. But here in in this context, this is what the town is getting, this is what the developers agreed to. A six hundred thousand dollar contribution to the school. To half a million dollar, five hundred thousand dollars for the deceleration lane. A hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the town park bathrooms. Fifty-seven thousand dollar grant match for the balance of the improvements on Clarkdale Parkway. And one million fifty thousand dollars for expansion of our water storage system. So it's a total of two hundred, two million three hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. In contributions to the town in the school district. Next. I want to talk a bit about the current political climate when it comes to development and housing in Arizona, and it's not just in Clarkdale. There is a definite housing shortage in in Arizona. And it's something that staff and elected and appointed officials like yourselves grab it with every single day when we are talking about projects like this. This year, there have been at least a dozen, if not more, bills introduced in Phoenix. At the House and the Senate regarding development of residential land and zoning of residential land for development. So first one is H B twenty-two sixty-one, that eliminates all parking requirements for residential projects. The next bill allows adaptive reuse of commercial structures for residential uses by right. And it's automatically approved for the maximum density allowed in the zoning code. H B twenty-three oh three requires municipalities to allow middle housing, which is this type of project. H B twenty-seven fifty, municipalities can no longer require H O A formations, we can't regulate the appearance of homes. You can't, and municipalities can no longer require walls, fences, or private streets. H B twenty-five eighty-four prohibits municipalities from regulating residential design and materials used on single-family residential homes. Next slide, please. H B twenty-six sixty-nine allows local home parks in any residential zoning district, allows manufactured housing in all residential zone districts. Twenty-seven twenty allows up to two accessory dwelling units on any residential lots. This one is limited to seventy-five thousand population or greater. Also, with that limit is H B twenty-seven twenty-one, which eliminates single-family zoning, allows townhouses on all single-family residence lots. And a floor area ratio of one, which means the entire lot can be covered with with structure. H B twenty-seven thirty-four limits the number of public hearings for residential projects to two. And it also limits the parking requirements for low-income housing tax credit projects. Next slide, please. Um, Senate Bill fourteen fifteen. Also calls for two accessory dwelling units on any residential lot in a jurisdiction with seventy-five thousand or greater population. Senate Bill fifteen oh six grants zoning for rezoning, commercial and mixed uses to residential. Senate Bill sixteen sixty-five allows third-party review and approval of Platte subdivisions and master-planned communities. And they are deemed approved if the statutory timeline is not met. That's a seventy-five thousand or larger population. And S B seventeen twenty repeal statutes related to municipal zoning. All of them, they all go away. Next slide, please. So that's the information that I have for you this evening. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. The applicant is here, and I'm sure he would like to, if he would like to speak, or if you have questions of him.
So this is the part of the meeting where the commission.
Yes, you guys get to ask questions.
Address what we'd like to address. For the public comment. So is there anyone on the commission who has a question or comment? I do. Is there anything you want to ask or say of Ruth?
Yeah, I have a question.
Who?
I have a question when you're done.
Just go ahead, then.
Um, I don't know if this is appropriate this time, but the price range of these homes. For the cluster homes and also for the other townhomes, do you say? If they were, if they were built and if they were for sale today, what would be the, the price range?
Would you, would you introduce yourself so people know who you are?
Commissioners, I'm John Lash, the managing partner of Plateau Two. To answer your question. What we're trying to do, we originally brought this project to the residents, they were all noticed back. Sometime last year, we had a meeting at the church and. You know, the idea was to try to not repeat the. Mountain Gate project. We were told at the meeting that nobody in the local area with a sixty-some thousand dollar salary could afford to live there. And so we went back, we actually around the perimeter had three-story product. And that was, you know, greatly looked down upon. And so what we're trying to do, I've been in the industry almost forty years. The only way I know how to create affordable housing is create smaller lots and smaller square. It would be super easy for us to take the set of plans we currently have at Mountain Gate and go build Mountain Gate Two. But, you know, I think we've listened to the community and are trying to offer something different. But to answer your question on the pricing, the housing industry is a retail industry. It's all based on supply and demand. Simply the fact that we have smaller lots and smaller square footages will dictate. That the prices of these houses will definitely be below what's going on at Mountain Gate. There was a huge increase in prices the last couple of years in Mountain Gate, and now. You know, with interest rates up and everything, things are coming back down. But we'll always have that differential and spread between this community and Mountain Gate, simply because the square footages, the lots and the square footage of the houses are small. When are they going to be built?
Wait, we're not in public comment. We're not in public, excuse me. This is the time when the commission. Is asking questions and making comments, and when we, following that will be the public comment.
So I'm, I'm wanting for entry-level housing. I was wondering if you can get any of them, you know, between down under four hundred thousand.
Well, what we've tried to do is plan the transition community, and so. On the buy-right property, we're planning one hundred and forty-four apartments. And then ideally, we'd like people to move into the motor court product. Which will be priced below the quote-unquote, single-family lots. Our marketing study, you know, well, the apartments are, that's a for-rent product. But the courtyard product is in the low four hundreds based on, you know, a marketing study that was done about six or eight months ago. And so the idea would be, you know, we're Mountain Gates and the high sixes, sevens, and eights, this would be down in the low fours.
So the, the real, eleven hundred square foot, the smallest, is going to be at least four hundred in the low four hundred.
Like I said, it's based on the marketing study that was done about eight months ago. You know, the trouble you, you know, that's happening in the town is you're just not providing enough housing. And so. When we, you know, put these houses out for sale, if we have, you know, five hundred people trying to buy a hundred houses. I assure you, the prices will get bid up. I mean, that's just, that's typical supply and demand economics.
And and will the buyers of the homes be individuals? Or are gonna, are you gonna open up to investors to buy blocks of homes?
No, they would, we're not, we're not interested in bringing in one of the big REITs and buying these homes up from us. They would be offered to the community.
Is that, is there anything else?
Um, would there be an H O A?
Uh, yes.
That, that's a comment that. I have. An interest in understanding that if there is an H O A. Or when the homes are sold. Is there a mechanism for requiring owner occupied for some amount of time?
Well, we haven't gotten into the details of the C C N Rs.
At that point, that's something that I have a concern for, is rather than seeing individuals. Buy them as properties that then they're going to rent out for as much as they can get. You know, whatever the market sale price is that you're offering, if there could be considered a mechanism. Requiring owner occupation for some amount of time. And I don't know if it can, but that's something I would like to see at least talked about.
All right, well, we can certainly consider, I mean, it's all in the details, right?
Right, yes, when we get there.
Are there any other?
Anything, anyone else? Go ahead.
Yes. Appreciate the, we have open space, we have a certain amount of density that's going on. And what I think is challenging on the piece of property. The shape of the property, the location of where the wash is, that's a lot of the open space. Took a proportion of it. And so the houses along Verde Ridge. The fifty lots or so that are all right together. They. At thirty-two feet wide, you're going to have a garage door, basically a walkway up behind the garage to get to the front door of the house. What I see from some two-story home images. And I'm just really concerned, one, is you've just got fifty of those homes in a row without a gap in between anywhere. You know, bring it up, make it more attractive. And it's just going to be garage door after garage door after garage door. And so we don't have a lot of variety for that particular portion of the project.
Well, let me, let me explain, we, we thought the same thing you did. And this isn't our first development, but we typically in that, in those lots have four different floor plans. And in the, in the, Plan One is all a single-story. So if somebody comes in a home buyer and they just want the single-story, fine. We don't really do a traditional two-story, it's called a pop-top. And so we offer, you know, four different floor plans with the ability to elevate the second story with a pop-top. And that's how we're differentiating the square footage and the, and the floor plans. And so when you look at the street scene, I think it would probably be a disappointment, and if everybody wanted, you know, everybody came in and just bought the single-story. Or wanted to build the single-story, and that was it, that the street scene probably wouldn't look so great. But I'm assuring you guys that of the four floor plans will be a mixture. Of, of the plans, and it'll really, I think, create a nice, and soften that street scene.
Will you be building some of these in advance, or in order to have a purchaser? Or are you waiting for somebody coming along and say, I'd like that lot, and just house on it?
Well, we typically build things in phases, because that's how we order the, you know, work from the contractors. And so we'll go ahead and probably spec. Depending on where we're at in the economy, six to eight houses. But you never want to get into pre-plottting the lots, because you'll find in the home-buying public that one of the lot, and one of the houses is more popular than the other. And so most of our developments, the town will request, you know, they don't want two or three elevations together. And 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 we get it, but we don't want the flex, we want to have the flexibility so we're not pre-plottting. Because you will find a buyer that loves the lot, but they, you know, want a different plan.
I understand. Will there be, will you have any consideration to reducing a couple of the lots along that thing that just creates? And so that long row of just continual houses without a gap? Yes. I would see. You're willing to lose a few lots, which is your money, I know, but trying to create a nicer street scape.
Well, as Ruth pointed out in her presentation, what we've tried to do is is offer distances between the houses where we could connect the trails. Primarily to the elementary school. I guess, is there a reason, you know, what would the, the distance between the houses, what would it be used?
Just open space, little breathing room.
So we would dedicate that then to the H O A.
Yeah.
But it would be, it would be unprogrammed space, it would just be.
Open space, or what you could do also is have the houses next to that. A little more yard space or something. Because right now, if my understanding is correctly, is that you're on the property line on one side. And then you'll have approximately a six-foot gap to the house adjacent on the other side.
Correct.
Right, so we have basically just six feet between all fifty of those homes. It's just a concern that it's just going to be. Not a lot of diversity happening right there.
Right. Well, like I said, with the different floor plans and the different elevations. You know, we're, we're trying to create that diversity. If we give the extra land area to the adjacent homes, we'll get a premium on those lots, but it doesn't really. Necessarily benefit the rest of the community, but, you know, it would provide additional separation.
Just looking for some consideration there.
Anything else?
Yeah, I have, I might not understand the, the densities and, and why Mountain Gate looks more dense than this. And I see that the, you know, Mountain Gate has a lot of townhomes at twenty-nine hundred square feet. But the numbers that we're seeing here for the, for the Highlands. That does not include the apartments that you'll eventually build, correct?
Correct.
Alright, so.
Yeah, the apartments are already zoned, you know, as, as right to develop that. So we're only here talking about the two single-family products, the motor court and the single-family lots.
Yeah, but to, to me, it looks a little, and, and. Forget the terminology, misleading, whatever, just looking at these figures, comparing Mountain Gate to this. If you're not adding in the apartments and that, and looking at the overall density with the apartments. I think the Highlands would actually come out as a higher density. Overall, for the entire property than on there, so the, these numbers.
Who did the stu-, excuse me, the study on the densities came from?
Again, we're talking about planning of single-family homes. Granted, in the future apartments, two different, they're two different, different project.
They are, but when you're, when people are trying to, you know, compare, it's not really apples to apples. Because that, even though it's a separate section and we don't, we're not discussing that part here. Those homes or those apartments will be there eventually. And when you look at the big picture of that, it's a much different density than what we're, what we're seeing here. I just want to make sure I understand that that's, that's the case.
The higher density in Malongate is because that's a duplex, it's got a, an adjoining wall. The single-family product we're proposing here is all individual lots, individual ownerships with no common wall.
For this part, right, but the apartments will be shared wall, obviously, so that density will be much higher.
Right.
I just want to make sure.
Anything else for anyone on the commission?
I do.
Go ahead, please.
Uh, I just after the pricing, if the eleven hundred square foot house, which is the smallest house, is started. Uh, I just after the pricing, if the eleven-hundred square foot house, which is the smallest house, is gonna start at.
Forty-seven is the smallest house.
Is, if it's gonna start around in the low four-hundred thousands. Are most of the homes gonna be five-hundred and up then?
It really depends on. Our marketing study shows are in the four hundreds, but like I said, if we're only offering eighty-three of these houses and we have five-hundred people show up. Uh, and, and, and the houses aren't built for a year and a half, who knows what the value is gonna be?
Well, I mean, uh, just thinking if they were built today, like the sixteen to eighteen-hundred square foot townhomes. Those would be around five-hundred, I would think.
We have a marketing study that's, uh, uh, not super dated, but, uh, you know, that, that product was all starting in the low four hundreds.
Is that complete for you?
Uh, I, I don't.
I think it's tough to predict.
Yeah, but the, if it's a lot of hundred square foot homes start in the low four hundreds, then the sixteen to eighteen-hundred square foot homes are gonna be more, right?
Yes.
So those would be around. Into five-hundred and up.
What, what's an existing sixteen-hundred square foot house going in Mountain Gate to? But like I said, we're, we're on a smaller lot, and so it'll always be, this community is planned to be lower in price than Mountain Gate.
Okay.
I have a question, um.
Okay.
Did you ever consider people concerned about, um, traffic and, um, having transit, having the cottonwood area transit? You know, so people could get on a bus instead of having to get in their car?
He's asking about the, uh, the busing. I mean, if there's room in the diesel lane.
Okay, and then when you're talking about leaving some room for some, oh, you wanna make sure people can hear you, oh, I'm sorry, so, um. For looking for some open space, I was wondering if you, any consideration for some wildlife corridors?
Well, yeah. And like I said, we've got, uh, we've got trail, we, we, we've got trail connectivity, I don't know if the animals, uh. You could use the same trails as the humans, but, uh.
I do what you're saying, okay. Um, I, I'm concerned about the median income to, um, of people, because this is supposed to provide for. For first-time homebuyers and things like that. And I'm wondering if they could even afford to get in, into this development.
Well, as Ruth pointed out, you, you take a certain percentage of your income and try to back into what you can afford and, uh. Uh, you have to figure out, obviously, you know, if you're able to make a down payment, what that is. And so it's another, you know, give us the assumptions and, uh. Um, you know, you'll get a different result for every assumption you use.
But I, I think you're trying to attract maybe like the educators, school people, things like that, and. On their salaries, I don't even know if they could do that, that, that's just a concern I have.
Right.
So I think it's a universal concern everywhere, and there's a lot of people having a hard time affording. And to buy a home, and I.
Okay. And so, that was it, like, when I first saw this project, I felt the same way as a lot of the folks in the audience. That this was pretty intense. You know, and, and pretty, and I may use the phrase, but I will cook each other. Not, you know, just one after another alongside. I'm, I'm trying to be open to the benefits of this. But there are still some concerns.
Well, like, like. What we are trying to do, like I said, is, is get to a price point that would be, uh, be appealing to the local residents. I know the town has got a grant, uh, to, uh, improve the bridge into the industrial area. And at the end of the day, when you look at what those industrial workers are making, you know, it's gonna be very difficult to attract businesses. All right, now you've got your new bridge, but you're gonna have a tough time, uh, attracting businesses, uh. Uh, you, you, you know, without offering a different variety of housing and, uh. Uh, you know, at, at a lower price point, uh, we do know the hospital would love to expand, um. There's nowhere for the workers to live, you can walk up and down, you know, all the retail, uh, and realize there's not, uh. You know, they all have help-wanted signs and, uh, uh, we're also, you know, um. Trying to work through the, uh, rezoning of eighty-nine A, but you know, you're not gonna attract any more businesses, any more restaurants, any more. Those people that work there won't travel great distances unless, uh, there is a place to live.
Thank you, I appreciate it, that's all I have.
Right, if there's nothing urgent, I would love to be able to get to public comment, is that welcome? All right, great, so, thank you very much, and, um. All right, so, uh, Ruth, what do you think, are we ready for public comment?
I believe so. I believe so, yes, excuse me, I'm losing my voice. Say yes, yes, okay, good, so, uh.
And I don't have it in my agenda, anyway. So we're going to. Open public comment. We listen. To everyone. And everyone has a right to speak. When you come to the podium, when you're called on, I have this. I have these. Things that people handed in. I'll call on you, come to the podium. Say your name and where you live. And then speak, we limit it to about five minutes. And, uh, please listen for if someone is making. The comment that you want to make after several of them. In the interest of getting out on time, maybe not everyone. Has to say the same thing. And then the other thing is, uh. We're going to listen to everyone, we want to hear what you have to say. And we're not going to vote by applause. Thank you. So, um, I'm gonna go in the order that these were handed to me, and I have Mike, Bon- Bonafaci, Boniface.
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 How you doing, Rob?
Hello, all right.
Uh, thank you for letting me speak. Andrew, as far as your, uh, I think the word you were looking for was skewing or swaying the numbers on the density. Uh. The person was asking about the prices, hundred thirty-nine homes. Fifty-five million dollars. That's nuts, anyway, let me begin. I'm gonna read, and I'm sorry, I'm not looking at you. Good evening, Mayor Town Manager Council, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening, my name's Mike Boniface, I'm from Mountain Gate. I, uh. Reside there with my wife, my, uh, mother and father-in-law, and my sister-in-law and brother-in-law. It's a quite small town feel that drew us over, drew us here. And this is a place we call home. With that said, I'm speaking here tonight, not in opposition to growth and development. But with the concern that Town of Clarkdale is performing its due diligence with regards to the proposed Highlands of Clarkdale Development. Based on the attendance of tonight's meeting. I'm certain my concerns are shared. I would like to read to you the Town of Clarkdale's mission. As published on its website. The Town of Clarkdale serves the community by providing the amenities, infrastructure, services, public safety, to enhance quality of life. We are stewards of our history. While we sustainably and resiliently plan for the future with an emphasis on community engagement and transparency. Planning for the future beyond being an Arizona statute is exactly why the Town of Clarkdale published its general plan in twenty-twenty-one. As you are aware, encompassed within the three-hundred-six-page document, which includes many studies. Analysis including land use, circulation, growth areas, cost of development, water resources, sewer treatment, to name a few. And this general plan is fundamentally the background guiding the future for the town and prospective developers to the town's vision. The general plan identifies the land which the Highlands of Clarkdale has proposed R-one residential. With the dexi- designation of MU mixed use, the same zoning as Mountain Gate Community One. I'm concerned that this rezoning will affect the property values in Mountain Gate while with the increased traffic through the community. The town acknowledges this potential impact, see page twenty-five, section two-point-three, land use designations, paragraph three. It states, intensity speaks to the impact a given use. That the subject properties and how they may affect nearby properties in terms of residential areas. The amount of traffic ge- uh, generated by. Uh, multifamily projects is greater than single-family residential, therefore multifamily users are described as more than single-family units. Under application twenty-three oh one four seven, John Lash, the developer of the Highlands, has requested the town change its zoning R-one, single-family residential. To pad ten planned area development, eight dwelling units per acre, this is a significant change. To the general plan. That we are current residents of the Town of Clarkdale and Mountain Gate requests your careful in the ala- analysis. Considering before making quick, uh, judgments and, and decisions. Regardless of the developer's company name used, let it be known that John Lash currently developing. Mountain Gate One as Mountain Gate Clarkdale LLC is the same developer of the Highlands of Clarkdale. When John took over the developing Mountain Gate, he and the town negotiated the terms of the development agreement, including but not limited to cost sharing. For the infrastructure improvements needed to provide water and sewer service to the development. The significance of pointing this out is that there are approximately a hundred vacant lots in Mountain Gate Community One in various streets. Some needing significant repairs. Which have not been completed or transferred to the town. Those hundred lots to be filled with homes are not contributing to the current water and sewer use volumes. And is importantly, not contributing to the revenue covering the infrastructure operation costs. That the sig- the town experienced in approving this development. In reference to the development agreement, Mountain Gate, the town paid an estimate five-point-five million dollars to improve the water system. The sewer treatment plant to accommodate the new, the new connections within Mountain Gate. The developer contributed three million dollars through a payment schedule, but was offered a waiver. On development impact fees and connection fees in exchange. The development agreement identifies these as shared costs, but in reality, the end-user are the residents of the Town of Clarkdale. We're ultimately bearing the cost of the infrastructure through the utility bills and taxes. Furthermore, I'm assuming that the town is continuing to repay the lump. The, the loan for the treatment plant upgrade, including interest.
Mike, Mike, excuse me, you're past the five minutes, are you close?
A little bit more, and I, I appreciate, because I, I, I spend an hour and forty minutes waiting for you guys to.
Please go ahead.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. Okay.
Um. No voting.
Off-site improvements are items that are constructed off a given product. Product site that benefit development, for instance, a new residential project may require extension of the sewer system from its current termination point, six blocks away to the new project site. The developer would be obligated to pay for that extension, even though it's not his or her property. If the project were to increase vehicle or tra- traffic enough to warrant a traffic light. Uh, in the intersection leading to the project, that would also be an off-site improvement. Um, in, in summary, there are a few questions I have for the council. I've reached out to Susan Guthrie, inquiring the town potential developer, performing a facilities planning study. About the town water system, in short, Susan's response, no, but a study would be formed later this year. With this response, I hereby ask the town council. And. To ask the coun- council, when considering the town's future, mission and values, how can you consider rezoning? And. Entertaining a new development without this analysis. Without this analysis, town has little understanding and leverage what it expects from the developer when negotiating development agreement. When the town expects to enter the development agreement, negotiations with the developer. We, the residents, the town, expect to be informed and want to see the analysis before the agreement is executed. This is a c- community engagement and transparency component of the town's mission, uh, statement. Furthermore, we, we just informed of a seven percent increase per year of the next four years. For water, on this, um, appearance, the town has not. Properly budgeted expenses associated with the water for some time, and maybe in an outcome of past development agreement negotiations. End-users, wa- water-paying residents within the Town of Clarkdale respectfully request the town. Perform due diligence when negotiating development agreement, regardless of the zoning ultimately is approved. Um. I would like to. Recite the Town of Clarkdale's values, copper. Customer-focused, preserving our history, charm and environment. Planning for a sustainable future, economic and social resiliency. Resourceful and innovative, and, but my last thing is. If we left it alone. Okay, we said eighty, eighty homes. Okay, so if we change it. There's a fifty-eight percent profit. Okay, that the developer's gonna get, is that fifty-eight percent profit gonna be? Handed over to the town? And I thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment, thank you for your comments. Maybe, uh, this isn't the council, this is the commit, planning commission, and if you. Wrote up your comments, you've written them up, it would be great if you supplied them and we could give them where you want them to go.
I, I, and I kind of thought it was, that's my bad, um. I, I almost felt like, um, John had hired Ruth, uh, that she was working for John. Um, I know she works for the town. But I, I got that concussion that she was actually working for the, for John Lash, not the town.
Thank you for your comments, all right, and if poss- if at all possible, please limit your comments. Wendy Jackson, are you here Wendy? Come on up.
Hello, I'm Wendy Jackson and I am, am Laura Clarkdale, thanks for all your hard work here, I know you guys all work really hard. And obviously, everybody's very interested in having this beautiful community we have. I guess we're really talking about sixty extra homes here in the small area, we already know he's gonna put in about a hundred and forty-five apartments right on that corner. So we're gonna have these big boxes there, it's gonna change the look of our town. After that, now we're talking about really shoving in a lot more houses, which creates. Um, the sewer situation or all that, that we, the, the town's just done a lot of hard work trying to figure out. And basically gonna spend, as far as I understood, about eighteen million dollars in the next very short amount of time. Which is gonna take about twenty years to pay off. And the town is planning on doing that, I think if I understood correctly, by raising rates of all this, citizens, which. Is understandable, but still, it's, you know, what is happening, and if you only can connect up about thirty more, uh, three hundred rather more. Homes to, uh, be in the limit of what we need, um, if he develops just what is in the R-one zoning right now, that's two-hundred-and-nineteen. That's not including the extra sixty that they're asking for. I, I, um, feel like it's kind of like. Paving parades and putting parking lot, I mean, it's kind of like what it seems to me. Uh, I really think that it's gonna take a lot of toll on, of more water that we don't need to give it away, whether we have it or not. It's gonna have more police and fire service for sixty more houses. Where it's gonna have more light pollution, which we really love the dark skies that we have. Um, it's also gonna create a heat zone, because you're gonna have all this cement and not very much land showing. Um, I don't think it's a very good social situation being three feet, having a three feet and three feet and twenty-some feet up. I would much rather have the R-one zoning, because then you have the diversity and you have the land and the space, you're still gonna have your hundred and forty-five. Or whatever it is, apartments that are in twelve. Block, twelve families per square box next to each other with no park or anything, you're still gonna have that on that corner. And, um, also, you're gonna still have these other developments that aren't even, that aren't even built yet. And, um, also you're going to still have these other developments that aren't even, that aren't even built yet. There's lots of houses here that aren't built. And, um, so losing the historical integrity is really something that concerns me. And by having the R one, I'm sure that they'll still, he'll still have an HOA. I'm sure it'll still be nice houses. It's just that little bit more space that makes everything beautiful. It makes everybody feel like they can breathe. And, um, not having crowded houses crowded together, we are a rural community. We have this R one zoning and that zoning for the commercials, so they can put in apartments for a reason. It's not to take everybody's time like it has to change everything. You know, we are a unique community of only forty-five hundred people and you're talking about maybe adding another thousand and we don't even know what the effect of all the planning that we've approved of is going to even have on us. So I think it's better to slow down, get some of our infrastructure in order, see what our fee should be for things in the future when we have these come in and take a very much slower approach. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Jacqueline Salam.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the commission, members of this beautiful community. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, yeah, uh, it was really useful uh, to have the presentation that Ruth gave and to hear from Mr. Lash on more of the details. Um, I think my general feeling at the moment, which I wanted to share with all of you, is that I think it's important, it's as important to look at what wasn't said as it is to look at what was in the presentation and in the motivation for the Highlands project. And, uh, previous speakers have already hit on some very important issues here, and I would just like to perhaps add a few details that fall under the heading of things that were not said. Uh, on the density question, and I appreciate very much the questions and the concerns that have already been raised by members of the commission on that question. I would just say that I think that the comparables that are being put up here as part of the rationale for granting the zoning change are actually not the relevant comparables. It seems ridiculous to me to hold up the, uh, zoning rules or the zoning standards that exist in Upper Clarkdale for homes that were built for the mining company between nineteen twelve and nineteen thirty. And say that, uh, William Clark understood the efficacy of using small amounts of space for housing. They built those homes because they had to accommodate a certain number of workers who were working for the mine. And that's how they made the decision about what the lot sizes should be. The issue here, the comparable here is what the current zoning would allow and what the developer is asking for. That's the only, as far as I can see, that's the only relevant comparable here. And I would really urge the commission to take a much closer look at that. Something again that wasn't said in the presentation, which focused on the value to the town of having a PAD as opposed to simply an R one. Something that was not spoken to is the fact that there are other pad numbers that the town can invoke here. Pad ten is a pad that suits the presentation and the design that Mr. Lash is asking for. Mr. Lash has every right to ask for that, but there are lower numbers of PAD allowances that would bring the density levels to, uh, equivalent to R one. I understand the arguments that were made, that if you move to a PAD, you can place greater demands on a developer on behalf of the town. Great, let's do that. My own feeling is we should put ourselves in the position to make the greatest possible demands on Mr. Lash. Mr. Lash is a developer. He understands the incredible value of the town of Clarkdale. We not only have water, we were just described in a travel magazine as the hidden gem of the Verde Valley. Everybody wants to be here. That's why he's building here. And thank you so much, Commissioner Spence, for raising the question of what the actual sale price is. The idea that this housing is being branded as middle housing seems completely nonsensical to us. Yes, there is a house of choice here and in the entire Verde Valley. And this is something that we need to respond to. The fact that the presentation featured that the percentage of people in Clarkdale who are paying fifty percent of their income on housing costs should be offered as a rationale for this project seems ridiculous to me because you can add more housing at a lower price or a lower cost to a homeowner if it actually is that, which we don't really know. And your statistics will improve, but it's not going to help the people who are still paying fifty percent of their income in order to have a decent place to live. So it's a slight up hand to offer that as a rationale for this project. So I would say this in closing, I think the town is struggling with bringing us up to a new level of development and opportunity. I think most of the citizens in this town support that and want to see that happen. We do. We are not against development. But I think the town has to define its, um, its mission. And it's not just words on a piece of paper, it's the actual life of the people in this community. That's what we care about. And so you all here tonight, you are the first decision makers in this process. And as a resident, I live at fourteen twenty-third South. I love this town. I moved here because I thought it was a fantastic place to live and to be a creative person and contribute to the community, be a part of something new and wonderful happening in the Verde Valley. And I appeal to you to slow this process down, echo Wendy's remarks. Let's slow it down. Let's take a closer look at this. Let's look at the different pad options. Let's look at what we really want to extract from the developer in order to allow this project to go forward. So thank you very much for listening. Thank you for your time.
We appreciate everyone's comments. The meeting is supposed to allow five minutes for public comment, and we keep going over. So I need to, as the person chairing the meeting, try to stick to the five minutes. We're going to be here till midnight. And we want to make sure we hear from everyone.
Could have been eleven. Just saying.
That was a good shot. Thank you. So, um, we'll call on the next person. And, and the other thing I asked, and I, I guess I can't ask it too strongly. I don't know if the applause is appreciating your neighbor or voting because you agree with what they said. But this is just supposed to be public comment. All right, Drake Mineke, is Drake here? Is somebody coming forward? No? All right, next one, um, Peg Sarkisian, is Peg here? Oh, he might have been in the room. All right.
Hi, I'm Peg Sarkisian. I live at fourteen zero eight Third South Street. We bought our house in nineteen ninety-seven, when nobody wanted those old houses in Clarkdale. Really, we bought it without a back door. We have spent the last twenty-five years fixing it up and loving it. We love our neighborhood. We love our community. We love the town of Clarkdale. I truly feel that history will be repeating itself after Mountain Gate. Mountain Gate was a little bit of fiasco at the beginning, and then it got sold and sold, and it's still not finished. I have to live with the consequences of the development right in front of me. I worry about water, noise, fire, police, the school, and our sense of community, and I think we're losing it. When I look out of my kitchen window, all I see are rooftops. I can hear the guy across the street in Mountain Gate talking. There's a barking chain all the way down. He's got motorcycles and it just gets crazy sometimes. So I hope you consider not letting the high density go through. I'm for growth. I'm for building. My husband is a contractor. It's just the way it is. If it goes through, make it look like Clarkdale and make it part of Clarkdale. Thank you.
Thank you, Peg. All right, and now we have Anne Klassen. Is Anne here?
Hi, Anne. I'm Anne Klassen. I live at fourteen twenty-eight Third South Street, and I really appreciate the opportunity to talk to you guys. Um, I'm very disappointed that the town was not prepared for this meeting. I know that wasn't your fault. Um, I, they knew this was going to be a huge meeting, and it, it stounds me that they were not ready for this. There is no way in my mind, a project with the increased density fits the town of Clarkdale's mission statement and vision statement. We've already gone over that. There's no attempt by this developer to take into account the charm and the history of our community. The town of Clarkdale's general plan was designed, has designated this parcel as R one zoning with a minimum ten thousand square foot lot. And it really needs to stay in that vision. Um, we can, the, the massive rooftops is just incredible. When you look at these houses and these developments, it just takes away from Clarkdale. Um, we understand the town's desire for the planned development, area development, the pad, but pad ten is just too high. Any pad from one to seven fits within the parameters of the R one zoning. So there are a lot of options out there other than just pad ten. Had one through seven actually fit within the R, R one zoning. Um, we currently also have three hundred and sixty-two signatures from Clarkdale residents posing the high density zoning change. Um, we, the citizens of Clarkdale, expect our town officials, town employees, and voluntary commissioners to work diligently to preserve this historic past, small town charm, and the future of Clarkdale against the overdevelopment by monetary-driven projects such as the Highlands in Clarkdale. Um, again, you are comparing apples and oranges when you throw historic Clarkdale into that mix. And the only way to keep the costs of this project down, if you're going to put eight houses per acre, would be to build little tiny houses in there. You don't have to have two thousand square foot homes with two car garages. Clarkdale, to start, Clarkdale has nine hundred and fifty square foot homes with single car garages. By comparing Upper Clarkdale to this project, it's just absurd. Um, so again, uh, I just think that we really need to look at the lower pad numbers. Um, I, I just would hate to see all those rooftops because they're going to be close and they're going to be huge roofs, each and every one of them.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your comments. All right, and I think I have James Blake. Hi, James.
My name is Jim Graves, and I live in twelve oh one Main Street.
Clarkdale. I'm sorry. James Blake from six oh six.
I heard the wrong name.
Is James Blake from six oh six Tapco here? All right, well, I'll find your name since you're there. Tell me your name again.
Jim Graves.
Speak.
I live in, I live in twelve oh one Main Street, and I vehemently oppose rezoning this land. I believe adding two hundred and seventy-eight units, which includes the apartment buildings on, on Smet Plant Road is a misuse of the property and a disregard for the current zoning. We don't need another Mountain Gate. And I've got, I had many, many reasons of why, but it's, this meeting has just taken way too long. I'm very tired. And it's just, it, from what staff said, I can just see it's going to get steamrolled. So I just want to say that I'm opposed to rezoning this.
Well, thank you for saying that and thank you for staying up late. All right, uh, Rennie Redosia.
Um, good evening. Uh, my name's Rennie Redosia. Live at fifteen fifty Abbey Road South, uh, in Clarkdale, and I also have a home at thirteen sixteen Main Street in Uptown Clarkdale. I, um, I have a long history here. I've been here fifty years, raised my family. I've been on the council for twelve years. I have been vice mayor and mayor of this town. And I, when I was mayor, I was opposed to Mountain Gate, caused me an election. Um, this project here, I'm not opposed to the development with the R one zone. Thank you, Mr. Kelly, for pointing out real density with the commercial added to it. I feel that, uh, planned area development is a worthwhile endeavor, but at a density of four houses per acre, which is equivalent to the R one zone. I think this particular piece of property is a very difficult one to develop. I am an architect, and I've worked with many developers over the last forty years of practice. Um, with the wash being on the north side and absorbing most of the open space, we end up with houses six feet apart to create, uh, density that they're asking for, big houses pretty. I want to point out that when, uh, Senator Clark built this town, the homes were about six to seven hundred square feet. And they were on the lots that we see in Uptown Clarkdale. So many of those homes originally were in the seven hundred square foot range, so hence there was more space between homes and, and the neighborhoods. The development that Shepherd Westnister has proposed is highly dense, not enough open space where the development is. So hence, on this particular piece of property, the only choice for open space to keep the density high is to keep the wash open, which makes sense, but there's no open space within the subdivision, and I think that's very poor planning. I think this is, um, uncharacteristic of County Clarkdale. And I also sit on, you have my county's Planning and Zoning Commission. I sit on that commission and have to make decisions like you're having to make tonight. And one of the things I think about when I'm sitting in your space or in your chair or the county is not only the facts or the information that's fed to us by staff, but there's also a human part of every decision that has to be made information that's fed to us by staff, but there's also a human part of every decision that has to be made. And you guys here have that responsibility to look at that. The human aspect of this development is not to the advantage of the town of Clarkdale. Clarkdale is not in the business of collecting as many things as possible. And I heard that from staff today, saying how much money the town potentially can make from the development because of this. That's not the job of the town of Clarkdale, to necessarily collect as much money as possible. The job is to serve the people here and to create and support what these people want, see what I want, I see for fifty years living here. I urge you to do not recommend approval of this subdivision to the town council. Thank you.
Thank you, Rennie. Ed? Flash, Lash, Ed Lash?
Hello, Ed Lowes, Clarkdale resident. Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, Town Staff. The PowerPoints, both the town place water and water PowerPoint we were referred to at the council meeting and the most recent one, I still have some concerns. Projected well production amounts are based on best-case scenarios. That is what the well can provide, however, total production is limited by any required arsenic or filtration and assistance. Mountain Gate well has already been throttled back, so the current filter and system can handle the gallons per minute and pressure to produce quality water. Burn staff and personnel equipment, maintenance, but that additional water infrastructure, these are all things to think about, and will these goals be met? You know, for completion of this development? Also, the lost my spot. Okay, the water main along Snett Plant Road, it's already tapped into existing piping, and that serves the Panorama Boost Pumps, where we just had a problem recently. That line was put in and engineered and calculated for the forty new units.
At the other, yeah, by.
Nation. So I didn't see on the map what main they were planning on tying into. So with this, we also have to think about, with production and usage, you have to have residual water required for fire flow, fire protection, along with additional heights. Sewer system upgrade, also addressed in PowerPoint. Part of the system, Uptown Clarkdale already failed, needed a bypass. Additionally, the PowerPoint shows, we know areas of identified in poor condition. Mountain Gate sewer system, designed for Mountain Gate, can it handle more flow? Or do we have to have a new sewer main installed all the way down to the sewer treatment plant? The sewer plant treatment plant, there's only one reactor, and it was bought used. The reactor, that sort of process all takes place, basically the part of the system. So if that fails now, or with additional input, discharge, can the ponds handle such a failure? I know in our plan, they're planning on another reactor, a secondary system. We have to handle bypass or system failure, or just simply system maintenance. And it's been a while since that thing has had overall maintenance. They've replaced aerators, they've worked on duration pumps, but we really have to look at wastewater treatment. So will, will these be met, these needs be met by completion from this development? Roads and maintenance, the town is already short-staffed. It takes weeks to fulfill a submitted work request. Will this be a gated community, or will the town have to assume maintenance of roads, sidewalks, traffic control, continued painting of lines, arrows, crosswalks, all which we already have issues with now? Schools, are there plans for more classrooms and staffing? Wildlife corridor, will a greenbelt be planned into the community? The proposed site is heavily traveled and inhabited by coyotes, avaleen, and yes, occasionally big cats and deer I've seen during dryer months. The creek runs adjacent to the proposed development, and by the way, it is a creek, not just a wash, it flows. Park system with housing cones, children, and the need to gather and play safely, are there plans for a community park? So not stock ads, but just food for thought. Cottonwood is already in the process for providing affordable housing and apartments for buildings as we speak. Does Clarkdale feel the need to follow suit? It's only five miles away. Mainly, I looked at zoning prior to purchasing my house, so I made a financial investment. So I thought, what's the worst that could happen? It's sound R1. More single-family homes, I live with them. So if we have something compatible going in, that was our expectation, remind my walk. That's the worst it can be, so this this isn't acceptable. Finally, please protect our quality of life, historic appeal. I am against rezoning. So what's the purpose of initial zoning if you're just gonna rezone for a developer?
For pastime, could you wrap it up?
Lost my thought, but this will take a second. So should we keep needs of a developer, or are we in the best interest and needs and interests of the town of Clarkdale and its residents? Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. All right. I'm having trouble reading this, I think it's Pete, last name starts with a B?
So, so I probably won't say much because I don't have much time. But I want to say that the previous speakers articulated themselves very well, and I think they covered pretty much everything I wanted to cover. The, there are two things that are important to me, and I think to everybody else. One of them is grocery stores and things of that nature have not even been brought up in this discussion. And Clarkdale badly needs grocery stores, or at least a grocery store. Okay, and the other thing is the inside of Mountain Gate, where is all this traffic going to go? Okay, is it gonna just, all of a sudden, we're gonna go through Mountain Gate, work our way down and head over to eighty-nine A? Or is that, somehow are we gonna control that? And those are the my two most important points.
Thank you. Traffic? Food. Grocery store has to want to be here. The gross, the commercial operations have to want, want to be here.
Well, that's what you guys have to attract through this thing, and you forgot I was gonna be.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Thank you for your comments. All right, I shouldn't have said that. I was out of order. I apologize.
Don't ever let it happen again.
I'm, I'm not, I send going in my book. Thank you, Pete. Sandy Booth. Is Sandy here? Ah, here we go. And I have another Booth name here.
Yes.
Are you speaking for both of you, or are we gonna have both of you?
No, he speaks for himself.
All right.
I would like to thank the commission volunteers for the work you do, and I would like to thank Ruth for her presentation. That was a lot of information, it was hard to hear it all and absorb it all. One question I had, if you could repeat the setbacks for R1?
Sure, the front and rear setbacks are twenty feet, and the side setbacks are ten.
Okay, I really like those setbacks, especially compared to the current phase of Mountain Gate, actually, the whole part of Mountain Gate, but especially what's going now. I really appreciate those setbacks. And, well, I want to say, I live at one twenty-three Sunset Boulevard. Been there for thirty-four years, and my husband and I have a manufacturing facility in Lower Clarkdale. The zoning map, to me, is a kind of a promise, kind of like what Ed said. It presents certain expectations for what can happen. And I know they change, but I really think the town owes those of us adjacent to this area to keep that promise. That's what I would like. And something struck me in the presentation that is very evident in Mountain Gate, how many of those look exactly alike, it's just rows of the same kind of house. There are shades of brown and shades of gray, and one, two-car or three-car garages, some one-car, but it's a lot the same. Personally, I like the individuality of the different lots being developed by whoever buys them and makes the power that they want. That's a personal thing, I know some people like things more regular, but really what's going on in Mountain Gate is not terribly appealing. And I would like the town to keep their promise to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. All right, now Chris?
Chris Booth, one-two-three Sunset Boulevard, thirty-four-year resident, Chair of Clarkdale. Let the record show that I am against zoning change. It was, I was talking to a council member who served on the council for twelve years. In the entire twelve years, he's never seen a crowd like this. I hope you notice the crowd. It's kind of ludicrous to say, giving a converting this R1 to pad ten is gonna be a protection of open space. That's insane to me. I walk two and a half miles every day through the streets of Clarkdale and Mountain Gate. I fought Mountain Gate when they were first coming in, before they came, and I fought it tooth and nail. However, as I walk through Mountain Gate, I kind of like the old, original. What the developers put in there now, there's nothing more than a ghetto. And I hope you listen to the citizens of Clarkdale. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris. All right, Kurt Lindner?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board. My name is Kurt Lindner, fifteen oh three Main Street, Clarkdale. I'm a recent transfer from Jerome. My dad was the first mayor, I grew up, I've got seventy-plus years around the Clarkdale area. And my grandparents live in Clarkdale. Lots of old black and white pictures. And I'm here to give you my overview and a little bit of my background. I'm the predecessor to Rennie Redosia, I served on P and Z for twenty-five years, and then, and now Rennie's on there. So I want to tell you what Rennie said, I totally back. But I, but I would also like to share with you that on, on, as a zoning person, many, many years, the public component, I was taught by my mentor, Chip Davis, who was my supervisor for District Three, the public component was one of the most important components that he wanted to give the people of District Three, and I tried to do that. And, and I want to give a shout-out to the three hundred signatures that have been collected here against this push to change our R1, and let's, you know, slow it down a little bit. We'll also tell you that we had so many applications in Yawkey County for zoning changes, and, and there are differences, and in some areas, PAD is not approved. And, and just residential zoning trumps, and other times, PAD is a better situation. But when you get a PAD, it locks in your density, and that's density approval becomes commercial, and it can be sold. These, these people could decide they don't really want to. If they get approval, they may just want to sell it to the next developer, and you have no say about that. So let's slow it down a little bit, get a little bit more public input to you guys, that you have to make a decision up or down. And I would say, what are, what are your opportunities today, and upper compensation? Able it, what is in the best interest of the town of Clarkdale? Because the last thing that I want to see is it have to go to an expensive referendum situation where we have to have it put on the ballot, and I think we can handle it right if you are the designers. And so I am really supporting of you, and I, and I, I support you folks. I would just say, as a point of housekeeping, when you do have a public hearing, maybe publish when the public hearing starts, so and have staff go for that, so that it's organized, because we lost half of our folks here. They, you know, they had to go meet together, or they were older, and, and they came there early thinking, and now it's almost seven thirty, seven forty, seven thirty-five.
Thank you, Kurt. All right. Craig? Haberter, Haberter?
You're almost there.
Haberter?
Craig Habler.
Habler? Oh, it's an L.
I tell people it's just one less syllable than Schwarzenegger. I live on five eighty-one Ever Lane in Clarkdale, in Black Hills, everybody calls that New Clarkdale. And I moved here eight years ago from the Bay Area, so I'm a bit of a tree hugger. And I just wanted to bring up a couple of points about the PAD, and the lot that it's on. And I wish I knew where I found this picture, but it shows the streams that clearly run through this lot and behind the school and lead under Clarkdale Parkway and eventually head down to the Verde River. And I just wonder what the developer has set aside for this water, this important water, the Verde River, which is the lifeblood of the Verde Valley. So that's, that's one point that I had. Another concern is the density, of course, especially the townhomes with just six feet in between the buildings. That's, that's very dense. I read in one of the reports that the parking is going to be figured on two cars per house. I'm assuming that they have a driveway out front, so I'm just wondering if there's allowance for visitor parking on the street? And as I was driving to this meeting earlier, I came down eighty-nine A, and I turned to go down Clarkdale Parkway, and I'm flashing back now to what Peg Sarkisian had to say about looking out her kitchen window and seeing nothing but ruse. And I know when she spoke tonight, she was referring And I know when she spoke tonight, she was referring to the roofs at Mountain Gate. But these roofs would just be closer to her house and all the homes on Third South. So I think we're giving up a nice boundary space, a nice natural space for the wash and the streams that run through that lot. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. All right. Pretty soon, I'm gonna need a two-minute break. Anybody else? No? Okay, I'm gonna make a beeline. All right, Robert Carlson?
Hello, I'm Robert Carlson. I live at fourteen-twenty-third South, like some, some of the other speakers here. I'd like to thank you all for the work, especially Ruth. She's done a tremendous job in terms of coming up with the presentation that she did. A lot of information and really good information about the water situation here in, in Clarkdale, which is really in pretty good shape, I think. My concern is just the trueness of that. With more density, you have more problems. It's almost as simple as that. Whether you look at urban planning all over the, the country. My brother lives in Newburgh, Oregon, which is sprouting up and they're putting townhomes right next to each other, et cetera, et cetera. And there's some issues there, obviously. I think that, that rezoning to a pad something other than pad ten, trying to keep the density down sixty or eighty, or probably sixty or seven, whatever the, the, the number is, keep it down at seventy-two, seventy-five, eighty, whatever. But any, anytime you can cut the density and still grow, you're gonna be better off. And there'll be probably fewer problems. But some of them you can't even foresee, but they'll be out there. So I, I reiterate, we should slow down a little bit. Take more, take a better look at it. And, but, but I'm not, not saying we shouldn't develop it, you know?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and let's see. Jeff Kack? Jeff Kack?
My name is Jeff Kack. I live at two-two-two on Jerry Sue in Clarkwood, right across from Yawapai. This isn't in my backyard, but we lived in Clarkdale nineteen eighty to eighty-seven, right on Main Street. So I were invested in the, the historical integrity of the town. I love it. Everybody loves it. I, I keep, there's no way I could add to what, what Mike or Jackie or Wendy or, or anybody said today. I just wanted to say one thing. The last time parts, or last time Planning and Zoning met on December nineteenth, you guys were told that there was a small handful that would always be opposed. This is not a handful. This is your town. And what they have to say should be taken very seriously. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Phil Sarkisian?
Hi, my name is Phil Sarkisian. I live at fourteen oh-eight Third South Street and I've been a resident of Clarkdale for twenty-five years. If we look at the present piece of property, and if, if that was the only piece of property left in Clarkdale that we were zoning, I think we'd be having a different conversation. But it is not. You drive down the eighty-nine A corridor, both sides of the road are zoning commercial. This property, this density would be well-suited for one of those properties. Furthermore, I have issues with the density change on the effect of the wildlife, noise, air, traffic, school overcrowding, fire please. My biggest issue is with noise. We were told tonight in the presentation by the town that twenty-five feet and a break between Third South and this development was adequate for noise abatement. I currently live on fourteen oh-eight Third South. I can hear homes in Mountain Gate at minimum four hundred feet away. I can hear people talking. I can hear their radios. I can hear their dogs bark. So the statement that noise abatement is not an issue is totally false. Furthermore, I'm against this zone change and I would like to see it stay R1. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Amy? Is it? Amy Stein, Stein Stern? Stein?
My friends call me Aim.
Aim? Ames?
Amy Stein. My name is Dr. Amy Stein. I live at fourteen oh-nine Second South Street. My home is on the historic registry. My husband and I have lived in that home for thirty-three years now. During those thirty-three years, we have contributed to our community as educators in a variety of other ways as well. Through a series of miscommunications, I was sent the entire document for the Planning and Zoning Commission. Over the weekend, I read the ninety-five-page document. I had copious notes and questions. First and foremost, I want to applaud Ruth for her thoughtful and thorough presentation. It covered for the public that which was afforded me in this document. I will limit my statement to on page fifteen, we make reference to, you don't have to go there, I'll cite it for you. On page fifteen, affordable workforce housing, we list first responders, teachers, and essential employees. In the two thousand twenty-three economic study conducted for the Regional Economic Development Center, the researchers discovered that the primary demographic of workforce in our area are employed in the food service, travel accommodation, and local government agencies excluding educators. Those individuals generally make minimum wage. I made a cursory calculation of a two-family home, both of which working full-time at minimum wage, which would bring it in at gross fifty-eight thousand dollars for the year, net forty thousand dollars a year, which would allow three thousand four hundred dollars a month to live on. A two-hundred thousand dollar home at eight percent interest, which is the going rate right now, would require a sixteen hundred dollar a month mortgage. As someone, I was in the back, so I'm not sure who was introduced. When asked what the projected cost of the house might be, we got a ballpark of four hundred thousand. I believe that's what I heard from the back of the room, which would essentially mean that someone making three thousand four hundred dollars a month, household making three thousand four hundred dollars a month, would need to come up with thirty-two hundred dollars a month for a mortgage payment. So working towards one of our primary goals of finding affordable housing, it was a ballpark, I understand, it was an uncommitted price. But I think that's a bit of a stretch to say that we're providing, increasing the density would provide affordable housing for those people that this study has identified as our workforce. Number two, and this came to me during the presentation, introducing a basic economic idea, which I think I learned my sophomore year in college, and it dealt with supply and demand. Because there's a shortage of housing or affordable housing in our area, if we produce more houses or construct more houses, we would increase the supply and then bring down the cost. When you flood the market with a product and you have a surplus, it brings down the cost of housing. Implicit in that statement, I believe, is the idea that we can devalue or reduce the cost of housing in Clarkdale by increasing the opportunities, which seems to me contrary to one of our economic development concepts for the town. It might potentially devalue the homes that belong to those of us who currently live here. I want to thank Ruth once again for her presentation and thank you very much for your consideration. My final comment, actually, there's two. There were more than a hundred people in attendance when I first got here. I counted noses from the middle of the room. There were more than a dozen letters of concern included in the packet. Many of those letters of concern address issues that the developer has left the Mountain Gate project unfinished. So I just wanted to share that. And I also wanted to share the fact that developers come into a community, they clear an area, they construct homes for a profit, and they depart. Developers do not build or maintain communities. We do. Thank you very much.
All right. Last name Anderson. First name, is it Lorenzo?
Hello, everyone. My name is Lorenzo Anderson. I've been a resident of Clarkdale for about four years now. And I tell you what, I love it here. My wife and I came to the Verde Valley for our anniversary and never looked back. Two weeks later, we are in this girl and the house that we currently live in. And we're both Californian transplants. Don't throw anything at me. But something I want to warn our community is something that I saw as a California resident. I had a career as a heavy equipment operator and built homes for Bezier Homes, Cave, Caveanian Homes, Pulte Homes, Trilogy Group. Those projects were twenty-two thousand, or twenty-two hundred homes each on all those projects. This little project is, is real cute. It really is. But it is gonna have a huge impact on this community. Just on talking about water. We got to see some statistics that were gonna have effect on just the use of water for people that live in those homes. But we didn't talk about the amount of water that's gonna take to build those paths, to build those streets, and to do all the underground work for those utilities. I noticed that the equipment that's used out here, they like to use a six-twenty-three cab water pool. That water pool holds ten thousand gallons of water. That water pool will make a visit to the water tower two to three times an hour. Do the math in that amount of water. That's over two hundred thousand gallons of water a day just to build that property. I cannot abide that property being used of that much water. It's insane. That's just one thing about the water. So if we talk about the amount of people coming in here, we're looking at at least another nine hundred. That's averaging two to three people per house. What that invites is people becoming frankly a menace to society. Because when you get too many people in a small amount of area, we get crowded. You can feel the distaste for people that live in Mountain Gate. I live in Mountain Gate. And it doesn't bother me. I totally get it. I totally understand how you feel looking at roofs instead of mesquite trees. Because that's what we get to look at with this property that we're talking about now. We get to look at mesquites. When we drive through on our roads down into the cement plant or up to the number one stop shop, we can see falcons going through those mesquites. We can see doves hanging on the dead mesquites. And we know that there's ample amounts of avocados and other critters that hang out there. And that will be lost because we feel like we need to make room for more people. And with that being said, I strongly oppose not only the rezoning, but the development of that property. My name's Lorenzo Anderson. I live at five-seven-seven Whistle Stop. That's what I have to say.
Thank you. Howie Usher?
I don't get it. I've worked as a teacher for twenty-five some years and I stood up in front of people all the time, talking all the time, and I'm nervous. Anyway, my name is Howie Usher. I live at fourteen oh-nine Second South Street here in Historic Clarkdale. My wife and I have lived there for thirty-three years. And we were drawn to the area by the historic nature of Clarkdale. And a lot of the developments that have been growing up around are beginning to change that historic nature. And I feel the rezoning of the land that we're talking about tonight will further change the nature of the historic area. So I oppose the rezoning and I thank you for all you do. And the presentation tonight was, was excellent. It provided a ton of information that needs to be digested and picked through. So one of the things I'm doing is requesting a hard copy of the, the presentation tonight so that I can go through it more careful. And I would hope that all of you getting the information tonight as well need to kind of digest it also. So I would strongly support and I implore you guys to table the decision-making part of this evening and provide time to digest it, not only for you, but for us as well. And revisit the, the issue at another, another time. I also would like to say that I support the natural area that flows through the northwest-west boundary of the property. And I know I heard a lot of protections for that area tonight. But as I look at the maps, it looks like they, in, the development's going to impinge upon that natural area. Clarkdale Jerome School built a outdoor classroom in that area. And I think that needs to be protected for the school and for the community. There's any number of other things I could say. I support nearly everything I've heard by the rest of the community. And I reiterate the amount of people that have been here. Reiterate the idea that the number of people here opposing the rezoning is a very, very loud voice that should be listened to. So thank you for all you do. Thank you for the presentation tonight. Thank you for letting me talk.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Right, let's see. I have one, two, three. Brett and Holly. I have two names on one piece of paper. Brett and Holly, they left? All right. And Amanda, is it Amanda Arnold? No, Amanda Arnold? Oh, I'm sorry.
Thanks, I remember. All right, Amanda Arnold. I live in Clarkdale, live in Mountain Gate. So I would like to thank you all for all that you've done today, Commissioner and Chair. We appreciate what you've done. I am not in favor of the rezoning. I am against that. But really what I want to address tonight is that we started with over a hundred and twenty people. That is a lot of interest in, in what is going on in Clarkdale, which is what we want. We want people to come out and be interested and hear what is going on and participate. That is something, that's feedback that I've heard that has been needed. But because of the technology and the, the issues with the sound, which I appreciate, you know, it happens. Well, you've got far less people than that now. And I'm sad that we didn't get to hear a lot of the other comments. We missed several comments because things drove, was drawn out too long. So I would say we should table this and maybe have more public comment so that way we can hear who we missed, because that might have been very valuable insight, like some of the feedback from Mountain Gate. Thank you.
Thank you. Cynthia Mala? Did you say she headed out? I like Drake and was there James? was there James Blake here? Or did he leave? All right. Uh, now, those are the things that were handed in to me. Do these need to be read into the record? Okay. Um, ow! Thanks, Mike.
My name is, uh, Mike Lindner. I am a resident of Clarkdale, sixteen oh four Main Street. Uh, I'll be very brief. Um, I want to thank everybody for serving on the commission and doing all the homework and listening to this and making tough decisions. Uh, I just want to add some things, um, that I have some particular knowledge about. Uh, the first one is the impact on traffic. We didn't see anything about traffic on Main Street. Um, traffic on Main Street will be impacted because we'll have several more trips going down the cement plant road over to the Clarkdale Jerome School. So this is really not a great plan. The town is currently looking at connectivity. Uh, development should connect the neighborhoods. Figure it out. Sixteenth Street, maybe the school needs to give up some of their property to, uh, make some connectivity so that people can get to the school without going all the way down Cement Plant Road and down Main Street. The current traffic situation has been very detrimental to that neighborhood as it is. The other point that some people have touched upon is that zoning is the result of planning. And people rely and have relied on the zoning when they purchase their homes. That's why everybody's here tonight. And there is precedence in the town of Clarkdale, uh, for decisions such like, uh, decision like this. Um, I don't have the particular specifics because the meetings occur, uh, more than five years ago. They've been taken off the town website. And I did not do a public information request. But, um, this information should be made available to you as a commission, um, as an option. Um, but there was a proposal for zoning or usage, uh, on Broadway near the massage school. And you probably remember that, sure. And, um, it took the council to speak up and use that same argument that people purchased their homes based on the existing zoning. The developer or the landowner knows what the zoning is when they come in. It's not appropriate to come in after the fact and make changes, especially to this magnitude, two times the density. So that's precedence. It's in the public record. A lot of people may not know about it, uh, but they should. And that should be part of the education that you get, um, as board and commission members. The, you know, past issues have come up, how they've been handled. Um, I've sat on design review. I've sat on historical preservation commission. And I know it's very difficult sometimes to think what options there are. One of the greatest options that you have is to table something. There's no rush to make a decision tonight. Um, if you feel you have sufficient information based on what the public has come and said, uh, you could reject, you could approve. But you can always table and make this thing come back. But, uh, my position is it's not appropriate to change the zoning, uh, when people have relied upon it. Um, as recently as the twenty-twenty-one general plan, it's R one. Okay. So if we were really planning for high density, I would have thought that that change would have come forth in the general plan. It didn't. Uh, just one final comment. Um, I know that everybody likes to try to solve the problem workforce housing. And it's been said before that that's a problem that really can't be solved as long as construction costs are so high for labor, materials, and land. So yes, you're gonna have smaller lots and the homes might be less expensive. Uh, but who are we building this workforce housing for? Um, it's my observation that it's not for the jobs in Clarkdale. It's for jobs in Sedona and Conwy. So let's have those communities solve some of their own problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, um, I think we've been through the public comment.
Thank you all, Commission. My name is John Jones. I live on Laughing Hill Drive in Clarkdale. I've been a resident for about two years and spent thirty years down in the Phoenix metropolitan area watching it approve developments like this one right after the other. And I think you have to ask yourselves for the residents and our community going forward in the future, do we want to be Phoenix or do we want to remain Clarkdale? I would love to see us remain Clarkdale because we love it here. This is a fabulous place as it is. Having a development like this, this is not affordable housing. That's already been stated and proven here. So making small tiny lots where you can walk from rooftop to rooftop and gaining nothing for our community. I strongly oppose this. Four hundred thousand and a hundred and thirty-nine homes, for those that haven't done the math, is fifty-five million, six hundred thousand dollars. To which the developer, according to this, has offered up roughly two point one million to help the town offset costs and leave us behind with the need for more police, more water, more support for this community to which we're being offered peanuts. At the very least, I strongly urge you to table this. Allow for more comment. I couldn't hardly see or hear anything in the back for a long time. And have yourselves be able to review this as well as the community input and ask where we see ourselves in the future. As the gentleman just said, these are not for jobs in Clarkdale. These are for people at the very least that are working elsewhere that we get to see the rooftops for and put up this much stuff behind. And I appreciate you allowing me to speak without having filled out a card. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you for your comment. You have, oh. You want? Okay. And Karen?
Yes. My name is Karen Gorman. I've been here for almost twenty years. I am a Realtor here in the area. So I had, uh, was listening at home and felt I had to come down to share some information, uh, for some of the comments. Um, as far as the development itself goes, I was sell a lot in Mountain Gate and I also around the whole area valley. And addressing questions about parking and spacing between the houses. Um, if you notice when you go through Mountain Gate, a lot of people now, there's not, was never intended to be public street parking. And that's why you see the cars, you know, parking on the sidewalks and things like that. So having more space between the houses. There isn't even a designated that I could see from the little plan that might have been there, but I couldn't see it, where there were public parking spaces. If we're looking for families, they're gonna have birthday parties. There's no places for them to park their cars and walk down. The houses so close together. There might be room for one car in front plus two in their driveway if the driveway's long enough. So I just wanted to consider that in the plan because I know I am for development and, and growth, but I think it needs to be appropriate for our town. And then looking at the numbers that you had asked about, about the, uh, pricing, I know everything is variable from day to day. Prices change as we know even for a loaf of bread these days. Um, but based on the numbers, I just wanted to provide you those to take into consideration. Uh, the price per square foot that, uh, was brought up for the four hundred square foot comes to roughly three hundred and sixty-three dollars per square foot for an eleven hundred square foot house. And you can see from there excluding the houses that have those large RV garages in there. Mountain Gate currently is already selling at those prices. So this is not really an affordable housing for our working force, uh, that we need in this community. So there is other ways to do that. I've also served on board with HPT for humanity for over sixteen years here in our valley. Um, so no, there is many other options for providing that. And then as far as, uh, you had asked a question about, I thought was a fantastic question as well, about occupancy after ownership. And I don't think that would be an HOA limitation that would go along with a request for on deed restriction. Is where I believe that might fall easier to handle than with an HOA trying to mandate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Karen? All right, um.
I will speak.
Uh, I just want to make sure that, uh, if there was anybody else here planning to speak, who didn't? Ladies first.
Oh, sorry.
So therefore you.
Fifteen, fourteen, first South Street.
I'm sorry, I missed your name, sir?
Pardon?
Your name?
Yeah, Paul. E C K H A R T. What, what I think we need to talk about here is Clarkdale. This is a unique spot. This is history. This is Arizona's history right here. We're all part of it. These are the, this is the soul of this town, right? Not one person has come up here and said, "We want this zoning." We don't want this. We don't need this. By all means, let them build what they can build by the current, uh, zoning. But we don't need more high density. We've already gotten Mountain Gate. Nothing can be done about that. It's there. It's part of our community. But we don't need any more of that. You know, unfortunately, we live in a country where the dollar, the almighty dollar rules everything. We need to look past the dollar and see what this town represents. I mean, this is one of the top three or four towns in this state, I think. And we cannot let it be destroyed. And it will be destroyed if we allow this kind of intense development. It's unnecessary. Let them build what's according to the current zoning. But put in that kind of density is not in benefit of the town. So you guys are gonna have a big decision here. It's gonna implement, uh, uh, this town for years and years to come. So I hope you think about what this town is. It needs to be kept like it is. We can have develop. Everybody knows we have to have development stagnate. But we do not need this kind of high-density development in our backyard. And I want to thank everybody for being here and letting us speak. And like I say, think about this decision because it's major. It's a major decision.
Thank you.
I, I will leave real quick. I only have three points. So my name, my name is Bernard DeMires and I am a cottonwood brother. But I was also born in nineteen seventy-four. So I've been here for close fifty years. And a few things that I wanted to address to, uh, to counsel the chair was that, what's in regards to pricing? Um, I've done a lot of things in my career, but I've also built a few houses. And recently I tried to put, uh, develop a triplex in cottonwood, got all the way through, sent a ton of money out of plans. Went to a meeting like this and then I was told that I had to add X amount of money for street improvements. And on and on and on and parking. And it made it possible for me to develop, uh, affordable housing. And so I just want to keep that in mind when we talk about the, um, the request that we're asking him to make and improve streets. Uh, I'm not saying, um, I just want to keep that in mind. As, you know, that's a lot to ask for. And if he's willing to do that to improve our town, I think that's a great thing. I also want to address the issue, um, back to, uh, home prices that you, uh, you had asked. I think also to keep in mind is that I think it's a little unfair to ask him to like actually pinpoint a price. And because as a builder, we all went through this crazy home, you know, uh, pricing where, you know, you could not get materials, uh, materials were increased. And in order to be able to actually build affordable housing, he has to be able to, uh, you know, get it at a fair cost and then provide it to the public. So I just wanted to keep that in mind because it was very hard. I couldn't, I couldn't afford affordable housing, building a house. So my last thing that I want to say is about choice. Just told you I was born here in nineteen seventy-four. I didn't have a choice where I grew. And if you want to talk about ghetto and ghost towns, Old Town was a ghost town. I did the parades down in Cottonwood, July parade right here, twinkle, tan, and there was nothing. And I am firm belief that the reason why we are such a great Verde Valley is because of the people that are here. I want to look around this room and I was like, how many people are small business owners? How many people are employees working for the owner or the big corporation? Um, and so I think that is just my point about choice and growth. Um, if we didn't have, uh, housing like developments like Mountain Gate, I understand concern about water. I respect everybody I do. Not gonna be the dead horse. But I can almost guarantee you that I have lived here probably longer than most people here. And I, I've heard a lot of people say that they live in Mountain Gate. Well, if Mountain Gate wasn't here, where would you guys live? And so I just want to say that and I get the zoning. Uh, but also if the density is an issue, well, something is gonna go there. And so, um, I just wanted to leave it at that and say that I am in, I am for the project. Thank you.
Thank you. So are you the la- is there anyone else after? Okay, please say your name.
My name is Leslie Boulay. I live in Mountain Gate. And I actually had the opportunity to work for the first developer in Mountain Gate.
I remember you.
I got that call to start my job back in two thousand and one and I was so excited. I all were like, oh my gosh, Paul, we're gonna get to move to Clarkdale. I was a school teacher. I couldn't wait. Well, we didn't start that project until two thousand and six. And one of the reasons we weren't able to start that project is because the town made us build every single street. They made us put in the infrastructure for all six hundred and five lots. All of that had to be done before the builders can start. If we'd started back in two thousand and one, we definitely wouldn't be having this conversation today. Because every one of those houses would have been built by the time we got to two thousand and eight and everything collapsed. You have to be careful about what we're doing. You really do have to be careful. Because it impacts Clarkdale more than it should. Somebody talked about, well, there's a grocery store. Back then, we were talking about how we were gonna have our Trader Joe's because they'd actually petitioned to come in. They were so excited about what was gonna be happening in Mountain Gate. The grocery store was gonna come in too. And none of that happened. Because we ended up with four hundred and five empty lots. We sold almost two hundred houses in those two years and it's just been sitting there. We were really, really lucky to have a developer come in. Do a great job building those houses, try to match what was already there. They built a two, a two million dollar complex right now. We've got a beautiful park. They didn't make any money out of that. I keep hearing about fifty-five million dollars. That is not what anybody is gonna be netting on this project. I promise you. You're not paying attention how much it's gonna cost them to actually do this project. And it really is affordable housing. I'm a Realtor, four hundred thousand dollar house. And of course, we don't know what that's gonna be. You, God forbid, it couldn't have been a two hundred thousand dollar house. That happened in two thousand and two, two thousand and nine, two thousand and eleven. I sold a house that I paid five hundred thousand dollars, sparked with two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. It was horrible. It's markets. We better jump on this now because if we wait too long, there won't be such a thing as affordable housing in Clarkdale. There's never gonna be affordable housing anywhere. And yeah, I have to drive to Sedona for my job, but I can't wait to come back to my sweet little Clarkdale. You know, to be in my darling little home. You don't need to live here in Clarkdale to be able to have affordable housing. I'm proud that in Clarkdale, we can offer affordable housing. And this really is a wonderful thing for our community. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Les. All right, is that, uh, that's it for public comment? I think we've had everyone speak. Pardon me?
Somebody, um, on Zoom or something gets to ask or speak?
I, how do you handle that? Do you want to invite public comment from Zoom?
No, but I don't think anybody's requested it.
Okay.
No hands are up? Okay. All right, so.
I'd like a chance to respond to some of the comments.
I would love for you to have that too. Does anybody mind really? Can I take a thirty-second break? I need it.
But let's ten minutes, huh? Ten-minute break?
Two.
She's gonna be first. All right, I gotta call Rick and see what's going on.
I don't really do a lot. I got a spin.
All right.
Pardon? I just had a hand that stretched. There, yeah. That's my house.
Where do you live? I'll grab my rip.
I didn't mean that. That's my house. I mean, that's a Richard Kraus painting. But it's my husband listening.
The ranch is, is our one. That's pretty cramped.
It is. I was surprised when you said it's our one. When you realize that.
For, I mean, I, I live on one acre. I can't imagine. I would never live on more than that. I wouldn't like to have three other homes on our yard. And now that's, I certainly wouldn't want to sell.
For, you know, doing all this, going way back when, the Mountain Gate community started in two thousand and four with the development agreement. The developer basically left town. We came into this town and took a big risk to get involved. And on day one, the town required us to put in a million nine to drill a new well, not for our development, but for the community, and also improve the sewer treatment plan. Since then, we've also had to sign up to pay another two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars to improve the arsenic treatment facility. And on top of that, we paid another hundred and ninety-eight thousand to support the, the school and the expansion. As part of our development agreement, we've also agreed to pay three hundred thousand to acquire the right of way to improve Centerville Road. We've also got an obligation to actually do the construction for Centerville Road. You know, and so hopefully, you know, I know it's part of your traffic circulation pattern, and hopefully, once Centerville Road is connected, it'll keep the people out of the Mountain Gate community. You know, people are going to drive wherever they want to drive. So I don't know if there's a way to, to limit that. And then last year, as part of our development agreement, we also put in the five parks and the trails. But what wasn't part of the agreement, and then we didn't have an obligation to do, but it goes back to the original developers' you know, promise was to put a park in. And so, you know, being greedy developers, we went ahead and invested over two point five million for the Mountain Gate community. If I, if I, you know, was under that mind thought, I put the money in my pocket, but we didn't. We, we did the right thing and built the park, and hopefully, everybody sees it as an amenity. I guess selfishly for us, we hope it, you know, keeps the house values high, and we sell the rest of the lots there. So, you know, it's not off or not, but we'll see, you know, what happens. Last year, we came in to approve the plateau project across the street, fifty-two units, and we were asked again to sign up for a development agreement, which primarily includes money to improve the Summer Mongini Park. As it relates to the Highlands Project, when you add the sewer and water connection fees, along with the list that Ruth went over, the total amount is three point four million. And by trying to build the community to meet the affordability, and you look at the amount of extra grading, infrastructure, side yard walls, landscaping, and everything else, there's another four million. And so, you know, at the end of the day, it's being perceived that we're trying to build this additional density because we're greedy developers and want to put the money in our pocket. At the end of the day, you know, if we can't come to a resolution, it may make financial sense. I mean, I'd rather save the seven million dollars. You know, I don't know, we're pushing water up a hill here. And at the end of the day, you know, I think you guys would have to realize your infrastructure is getting older. The cost of materials and the cost of labor to replace the infrastructure isn't going the other way. And, you know, you're probably forced to add ten, ten, twelve thousand dollars to all the, you know, the current property taxes. But if that's what the people want, you know, it is what it is. Somebody's got to pay to improve all this. You know, we've certainly done our part. And that's all I wanted to get across is, you know, we're not just here. I think the other thing I can tell you is, in addition, you know, year after year, we've supported the town's car show. We've donated to the pancake breakfasts. We're supporting the Yavapai College, supporting the youth little league here. So I think anytime you've come to us and asked us for some help, we, we've certainly provided it. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Yeah, I wish I could. Am I allowed to say anything or? I think that I'm one of the people that loves Clarkdale. And everyone here on the commission, we are the people that love Clarkdale. And I think really mostly, we all want to cooperate with one another and find a solution that we can all be happy with, that we can all be proud of. And I don't know that there's good guys and bad guys here. I think we're all people who love Clarkdale. And I thank you for everything you've done. That's just me. So are we ready? To action items. What, what am I looking at? Looking at an old meeting. I think that we're here to take an action, and I'm thinking maybe proside, blah, blah, blah. I think I've got a copy. I think we want to determine what our, what the, what the action is we're going to take. Yeah, but I understand. The action. We need a motion. For what we're going to do. I don't have it. Sorry. That's right.
Before we get to that, I don't think I heard, what was the town's actual recommendation?
What?
Their recommendations.
Staff's recommendation. So.
Oh, yeah.
Now that we're in a closed public hearing, it's time for the commission to make it. There you go. There's the official gavel. So the options before the planning commission this evening for this action are to either approve it as submitted, approve it with, with stipulations, or deny, or send it back to staff for more work and table it to a future date. If the commission decides to table it to a future date, we will go back through the whole posting process all over again so that everyone is notified. So it will be just like another.
Sound will be, we'll make sure the sound works. There's plenty of.
We'll be doing it in the auditorium next time. As they try to jam everyone in here.
Okay.
So that everyone will be able to see, will be able to communicate much better. And in the interim, if the, if the commission decides to table this and send it back to staff for more work, it'll give us some time to work with the developer on a couple of the comments that we've heard this evening. Staff's recommendation is based on whether or not this application meets the requirements or code, or does not meet the requirement of code. This application does meet the requirements of code for a zoning change application. So staff has to support it. But again, but the commission can take staff's recommendation, add to staff's recommendation, deny it, and send it forward to town council with a recommendation based on one of those three actions, or like I said, postpone decision making, send it back to staff, table it to a future date, and then it'll give us some time to work on some of the details. So then we need to come back and do that same action on the preliminary plat.
All right. So commission members, does anyone have a motion? Or a recommendation about what you want to do?
I'd, I'd like to make a motion to table this, send it back, and review it at a future date. I think we've had a lot of stuff thrown at us. I think we, some of the people missed the input, et cetera, and I think that only makes sense to do that.
Yeah, I think in.
I, I have a question about that. Don't we have to be specific if we say table it? What kind of information are we looking for?
No.
We're just telling.
We don't. We table it and send it to staff for further work. And what Ruth said was if we do that, we'll make sure that the next meeting is in a bigger space. We'll make sure ahead of time everything works. And I think that that's what's right for Clarkdale, myself.
I second.
So, second, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed?
I recommend, I would recommend denial. Of this project, just straight out. I think tabling, it just puts everything, you know, all these people that came here spoke, and we heard it. And as Ruth says, it meets the general plan requirements. Ruth pointed out every situation of it. So to me, there's really nothing more for the planning commission to do, but make our recommendation for denial.
We just voted. One of us voted. All right, to table it and give everyone a chance to look at all of the comments, to regroup, to have another session where everyone who wants to be here has an opportunity to be here. And we'll see what transpires. But we just, we had a motion, a second, and we voted for, agreed to table it. All right, that's a done deal.
Second one.
In a second, we do the same for the second.
Right, so even though we cannot send it forward, it would be appropriate for the commission to send that one back as well.
All right, we have a motion to send that one back. The second item.
I'll make a motion to.
All right, we have a second. Thank you. All those in favor? And want to post? All right. And so we're at the last item on our agenda. Future agenda item? Oh, do you want to say anything about future agenda items? This will be next. Yeah.
Yes, so we will be holding a special meeting on February twenty-ninth with the town council and the planning commission to discuss the historic preservation ordinance.
Right. Good. And so now, is there anyone who has a motion for adjournment?
I make a motion for adjournment.
Have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.